This means that we're going to be late, or are we going to be?
Is it possible?
I guess we're starting. I'd like to call to order the work session of July the 15th. Today is Amazon Prime Day, so I know that all of you all want to get back to your computers quickly, so we'll try to go through a lengthy agenda rather quick, as quickly as we can. We have some service awards first, and I would like to call forward our five-year employee, John Beebe, from the fire department. Mr. John. All right, how about Lori Burdell from our Parks and Recreation Department? Lori. Watch your step, watch your step. And a 15-year employee from our Public Utilities Department, William Anderson. We have two 20-year employees, I was going to call them up in alphabetical order, then I'd have lost the alphabet here. So I guess it would be Frank Whitney would be first. Frank from our fire department.
Frank Whitney started his career with the city of Clearwater on July 19th, 1999, when he joined Clearwater Fire and Rescue. Frank was initially hired as a firefighter EMT and was quickly promoted to the rank of driver operator in 2004. In both roles, Frank has provided excellent care and service to our citizens and the surrounding communities. Frank graduated from Eckerd College in December of 2005, earning a Bachelor of Arts in Organizational Studies with a public leadership track. Frank enjoyed driving at Station 48 for the majority of his career. Throughout his career, Frank has helped aspiring drivers and occasionally assisted with the fitness program for the organization's recruits. He continues to be a pivotable asset to the organization through his involvement with the MRT, that's the Marine Response Team. Frank joined the dive team in 2015 and became a public safety driver in 2016. Frank became certified as an operator for Fireboat 44 in 2017. He is currently assigned as Engine 44 A-Shift Driver Operator stationed out of San Keith. Frank has been a model employee for 20 years. As our organization has become younger, both in age and fire service experience, Frank has taken on an unofficial leadership role. Many of our junior members look to Frank for guidance and mentorship. On behalf of the mayor, city council, city manager, and other city officials, we appreciate the selfless service that you have given for so many years. Together, we take pride in your accomplishment and value your commitment to excellence. It is an honor to recognize driver operator Frank Whitney for his 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Clearwater, our citizens, and his continued commitment to Clearwater Fire and Rescue. Frank Whitney, 20 years of service.
And continuing in alphabetical order now, we have David Yon from our fire department.
Assistant Chief of Suppression David Yon began his career with the city of Clearwater Fire Department on July 19th, 1999 as a firefighter. He then promoted to firefighter paramedic in 2001, and then again to lead medic in 2002, and served in that position for four years. David promoted again in 2005 to the position of fire lieutenant, and he held that position for seven years, and then promoted to fire medic lieutenant for six years. His leadership skills, medical knowledge, and fire experience has made him a good fit for his latest promotion in October 2018 to Fire Assistant Chief, where he is one of two assistant chiefs managing and supervising sea shift. Over his 20 years of service, Assistant Chief Yon was a member of the fire department's marine, dive, and technical rescue teams. Additionally, he has received a Turner Award for Outstanding Paramedic. Chief Yon has taken fire officer courses and obtained fire service certifications at the St. Petersburg College and is currently enrolled there pursuing his degree. David served with the military police in the United States Army and U.S. Army Reserve from February 1988 through April of 1997, which we sincerely thank him for his military service. David recently celebrated his 20th wedding anniversary with his beautiful wife Lisa. They have five grown children at home from ages six to 19. The city of Clearwater congratulates and thanks Assistant Chief Yon on his 20 years of dedicated service to the fire department, the city of Clearwater, and its citizens. David Yon, 20 years of service.
I'd like to recess our work session and call to order our pension trustees for July the 15th. Are there any addition or corrections to the minutes of June the 17th?
Will they be approved?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of June the 17th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda of the pension trustees? If so, please come forward at this time. Otherwise, we will move forward to Agenda Item 4.1.
Good morning. Motion to approve the new hires for the acceptance into the pension plan as listed.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.1? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.1?
Move to approve Agenda Item 4.1.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously to Agenda Item 4.2.
Motion to approve the following request of employees for regular pension as provided by Sections 2.416 and 2.424 of the employees' pension plan.
Any questions on Agenda Item 4.2? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.2? Motion.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 4.2.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Poirier, do you have any other business for the pension trustees?
I do not, thank you.
If not, we will adjourn the pension trustees meeting for July the 15th and call to order the CRA meeting for July the 15th. Are there any addition or corrections to the minutes of June the 3rd?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of June the 3rd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda of the CRA? If so, please come forward at this time. You identify yourself, have a card filled out with the clerk, and you will be given three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Over the weekend, I had a chance to go down to Venice, Florida.
Again, sir, let me ask that, you identify yourself?
William Johnson, 694 Redford Court, West Clearwater. As I said, I had a chance to go down to Venice and to Bradenton, and found that Venice is a very attractive, vibrant city that recently completed a streetscape upgrade there. And it's, as I said, very vibrant, with a lot of activity. This was on a Friday night. I also had a chance to go look at the Bradenton River Walk on Saturday, because this had been held out to me as a model for our Coachman Park project. It is a long walk along the river. It's very pleasant. One thing that you notice is that there are not a whole lot of people here, partially because it's such a large area. There are some activities that they have created there, like a playground, a splash pad, another look at that. And there's also a lot of areas where you can just sit and relax. But again, you don't see many, I didn't see very many people, and this was on Saturday afternoon at a time when I thought there probably would be quite a few people. And that is in comparison to what we saw when we were up in Philadelphia at Spur Street Park, where there's gobs of people in a variety of environments that are people magnets, hammocks, and also things for, to attract kids. And I go back to the ULI report that said that downtown Clarewater must become a vibrant and successful place in its own right, serving its own citizens, and further they specifically directed to install activity along the waterfront. I noticed that you have on your agenda at the work session, an item to approve $5,600,000 for the STANTEC engineering contract, and I also note that there's no attachments to this. So my question really is, how is this being designed to enhance the experiential effects, the experiential objectives that ULI and the original HRNA project envisioned? And I think that is very important. I'd ask your attention to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda of the CRA? If not, I will close public comment and move forward to Agenda Item 4.1. Ms. Thompson.
Yes, we're requesting to amend the loan to grant agreement with 4C LLC, DBA Black Brick Tavern and Kitchen at 432 Cleveland Street, to extend the agreement through October 1st, 2019, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same. The grantee has requested a three-month extension to be able to complete their construction and receive their business tax receipt, and I am recommending approval of that extension.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.1? Has the city done anything to delay this or cause this extension, or this was at the request of the property owner?
This was solely at the request of the grantee.
Okay. Motion.
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.1.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to Agenda Item 4.1? Comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously to Agenda Item 4.2.
Thank you. Authorize the CRA executive director to prepare an agreement for the development and sale of the property at 115 South Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue and the adjoining vacant lot for the purposes identified in RFP 09-19. So what you have before you today are a couple different documents. The CRA issued a request for proposals to develop a restaurant, brew pub, or similar attraction in fall of last year, and we received one qualified proposal, and we began the kind of negotiations and interviewing process. So today, we have the applicants here with Salty Bull, Brian Borowski and Jeff Moran. They're going to present their proposal to you, and then I will follow up with the major terms of the agreement that we'd like to move forward with negotiating.
Thank you, Amanda. Good morning, council. My name's Brian Borowski. This is my partner and friend Jeff Moran. We'd like to take some time today to walk through our proposal for a brewery at the 115 MLK site, the brewery what we call Salty Bull Brewing Company. I'd like to, let's get to the presentation. There we go. Let's tell you a little bit about ourselves, who we are. Myself and Jeff have been longtime friends for almost 30 years now. We met in college at UNC in graduate school. Jeff is a veteran of the U.S. Army in the airborne Rangers. After school, we each went our own way, had corporate experience in various areas. Myself, I've worked for several different large and small companies along the way, Fortune 500 companies and private companies as well. Pertinent to this project, I worked for Pepsi-Cola in the beverage industry for over 10 years, supporting different marketing roles, manufacturing roles, operational roles, warehouse, et cetera. I am a local small business owner here in Clearwater. I own Beacon National Supply, we're a distributor of industrial consumables to manufacturers, boating companies, for example, woodworking shops, and so forth. I've been a home brewer for almost 25 years now, so I have a passion for beer. I've looked at opening a brewery now for probably over a decade, and because of personal business, work reasons, that process has been delayed. However, I feel that this opportunity before us today is a great opportunity that fits the mold of what we've been looking to do. Jeff, talked with him briefly. He's a, he's going to be a co-founder. He's an investment fund manager who covers various industries related to this project. He's covered Darding Restaurants, David &amp; Buster's, Ruth Chris's Steakhouse, among many other different companies. He speaks with executives about their performance, looks to invest in the company or not to invest in the company based on those conversations. His wife Terry Moran now of 18 years, 19 years, so time flies when you're having fun. Terry is not here with us today. I'd like to give her a little shout-out. Hopefully, she's watching the live stream, so hi, Terry. Terry is, again, a co-founder of this business. Her family has been in the restaurant business. She grew up in the restaurant industry where her parents owned and operated several restaurants in the Los Angeles area. We're looking to put together a group and leadership of some very good partners. We're working with equipment manufacturers, some of the best in the industry, and we also have, over time, developed relationships with various people within the brewing industry and entertainment and restaurant industry. Brewmasters, brewery owners, restaurant owners, and we've also identified key people that we're looking to recruit into this business. People are a key to any business. Anyone who's owned a business knows that. We are talking with brewmasters, taproom managers, and as this project progresses, we'll have more serious conversations with those individuals over time. So, why the craft beer industry? Well, as I mentioned, I've had a passion for opening up a brewery, and I love craft beer personally. The beer market has grown tremendously over the last 10 years, 10-plus years. In Florida alone, in 2018, it became a $3 billion industry. Clearwater is an underdeveloped market. If you look at nearby cities within Pinellas County alone, there's 30-plus breweries, great breweries, but by and large, they remain outside of the Clearwater area. And as you look at this industry after decades of growth, the industry's become stagnant. It's matured. However, the opportunities that remain, and this became evident last year across the United States, the drivers of growth are new breweries that have found underdeveloped markets, such as Clearwater. Thus, we think that that's why this is such a compelling project, not just for ourselves, but also the city. The city, you know, has not really established a, an anchor business that is going to draw people into the downtown area. We think our brewery will accomplish that task. We are looking to build a world-class brewery where tourists, residents can walk to this location, Uber to this location, bike to this location. We're looking to attract beer enthusiasts, tourists. Clearwater Beach has been named the top beach in the country by TripAdvisor, I think two years running now. And to have that type of opportunity with people coming in, to give them a venue to go to on the downtown side, I think will draw a lot of attention and a lot of other traffic into the area. We're looking to renovate the existing building that exists on the site today. It's a 12,000-square-foot building. We're looking to configure it in such a way that we want to bring this indoor-outdoor experience, and I'm going to probably repeat myself a few times on this. What's very unique about this situation, about this property, is the green space that's attached to the actual industrial space. It's unique, especially in the beer industry. There's not many brewers, breweries that have that opportunity to allow people to go outside into a beer garden. I've done a lot of R&amp;D, as I like to call it. Jeff and I both have done a lot of R&amp;D, going to different breweries across the country and around the world for that matter. And many breweries have the destination within sight. They have great taprooms, they have great beer. However, to have this outdoor experience where people can go under the canopy of shade trees and sit in a socialized situation where they can be with friends, family, enjoy games and so forth, is very unique. So we're looking to capitalize on that. We're looking to have this theme of where earth meets industry. The concept that we're, that we're speaking about, and this is an architectural concept drawing from one of the architects we're working with, this is a busy page, but I'll clear it in the, in the top right corner is a bird's eye view of the property. The red dash lines are vehicle traffic. The yellow lines are pedestrian traffic. And the section K, in looking at the pictures in the top left corner of this page, is this concept of the social atmosphere that we can create under this canopy, where people can come with their families, friends, listen to live music. We can also have this open space entertain mini art festivals, and also integrate with different events that the city of Clearwater is already, you know, charged with within the different times of the year. The bottom-left corner of this page shows a concept of, well, what's this taproom going to look like? Taproom's going to be about 6,000 square feet, give or take, depending on final design. But again, this industry, urban type of field that people can have, and we'll also incorporate natural elements of the outdoors, wood, metal, glass, and those type of things. In the center of the page in Section B, we're looking to develop the back part of this building into about a 5,000-square-foot, 15-barrel brewery. To give you an idea of a 15-barrel system, it will create within one batch about 3,700 pints of beer. So it's a sizable system. The bottom-right corner is kind of this concept of, we want to, from a sidewalk vantage point from curb appeal, have this field where people can come and sit outside, along the street, people watch, have beer, again, even listen to live music. This next page is an exterior concept. We put a lot of thought into what we can do with this building. Today, it's a shell, it's a tin can. There's a lot of work that needs to be done to renovate this building and get it into shape where it has a nice curb appeal. The thought here is that we want to be able to enhance the curb appeal from the property, and again, incorporate these industrial elements of glass, wood, metal, and also, as people drive by, they will have a vantage point where they can look into this building and say, oh yeah, that's a brewery. We can see the stainless steel equipment in the back, and we see these people congregating, going inside, outside, having, enjoying, you know, enjoying themselves at the curb with an outdoor setting. So what are we looking to do from a product standpoint? Well, the primary core beers that we're looking to start with are an appeal to a broad spectrum of people. There are so many different beers that have been developed over the years within the United States, and Jeff and I have traveled to Europe, and even the countries that we traveled to, Germany, the UK, Spain. They're starting to get this gist of craft beers. However, we've gone through a craft beer revolution in the United States. There are more choices here today, and I would argue we have better choices of beer than what they have around the world. So we want to appeal to that broad audience, and our equipment is going to allow us to create beers that are going to appeal to that broad audience, whether it be a 4% ABV or a 10% ABV Imperial Stout or Double IPA. And over time, as we continue to invest in this business, we will be able to broaden that spectrum to allow for aged beers that have been aged in whiskey barrels, Scotch barrels, wooden oak barrels. We'll be able to create sours and other types of beers. The craft beer industry is ever-changing, so we are looking to continue to invest in our business and to be able to have that flexibility to where if the industry goes in one direction, we'll be able to create a product that will attract those people. High quality is a big part of this operation. As a craft beer connoisseur, I gravitate to the beers that are well-made. And in any business that I've been involved in, whether I worked for somebody or, again, starting my own business, there's pretty much three elements that you have to focus on: quality product, competitive price, and great service. We are looking to leverage those three things within this business, but it all starts with your quality product. So our capital plan is a multi-year investment plan. We're looking to invest about $3.4 million into this business. We're looking to purchase the land from the city, from the CRA. We're looking to, as I said, enhance the existing building and add a facade to that. We are looking to invest about $400,000 in brewing equipment, where we will be able to have the capabilities to produce that quality beer I talked about. The beer garden is such a great opportunity, where I believe, within the Tampa Bay area alone, the state of Florida, and probably the southeast and throughout the country, it's going to be a very unique property. There's a lot of different brewers out there, there's a lot of different breweries, and they're great breweries. However, to be able to have this space, this green space, to bring people in is very unique in nature, and we're looking to capitalize on that. So we're looking to keep that green space, keep the existing trees as much as possible, plant new native Florida plants, and make this into a beautiful setting, park-like setting, where people can enjoy their, their day. The initial capital, we're looking to invest $500,000 in operating capital to start. We're looking to partner with the city. So we are looking for some help with the city. We're requesting, based on the funding, to essentially match the operational startup costs. The balance of the capital will be a combination of what we have already pre-qualified for from bank loans, and reinvest our operating capital as we go forward with any operation of the business. So in summary, our goal is to build and create a world-class brewery. I've seen a lot of breweries in my day, and I'm excited at the fact that we have a space that I've said maybe too many times is very unique. However, I think that's going to allow us to fill this niche within the Clearwater market, bring in microbrewery to this underdeveloped market. The demographics for beer is broad, and we're going to create a compelling venue for people that will want to return over time. The partnership, we're looking to work closely with not just the city of Clearwater, but other businesses within the city of Clearwater. I believe that rising tides float all boats, and as companies work together, businesses work together, it creates a... work together, it creates a magnitude or capacity where people have options, and it will attract people to come into the area. Whether they come to our business first, another business first, doesn't matter, as long as they continue to come to the area and tell their friends, hey, look how great this area is. Let's go downtown and bring the family, play some games at the brewery, then maybe go down to the theater and watch a show. From a marketing standpoint, again, that local business is important to promote, and we look to tie into a lot of the events that the city of Clearwater will have, whether it's an art festival, a music festival, and somehow complement that within our location. Our project partners, at the end of the day, were serious people, we love beer, and we like to share our enthusiasm for that and maximize the customer experience. So with that, thank you very much. There is one thing I would like to say, however, as I end on this. My friends, my friends, my son's friends asked me to start off this conversation with "What up, council?" I chose not to do that originally. However, on the table there, Evan, Aaron, you agreed to paint my house. How did I say that to the city council? And I believe that's on record.
Thanks, Mr.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. Council, any questions of staff or Mr. Borowski while he's here? Any questions? Thank you, sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Cundan.
I just had one question about parking. I didn't see anything in the plans for those who don't Uber or bike in.
Sure. Do you want to answer that question? Okay.
And while Ms. Thompson's coming forward, let me ask that if you have your cellphone or other device that makes noise, to please silence it so as not to disturb our meeting. Thank you.
So if you will recall, early last year, the CRA trustees approved the land exchange, so we got the multi-space surface parking lot adjacent to the Nolan, so they will have access to that site for their immediate parking needs. And then in the redevelopment of the property to the south, we'll be working with whatever housing developer is selected to build additional public parking, just kind of like the Station Square deal. So there will be a level or two of structured parking that will ultimately serve that entire neighborhood. So in the immediate and going on, they'll have the Nolan until parking lot until that lot's redeveloped.
Any other questions, council? Ms. Thompson, clarify something for me, please. Thank you, gentlemen. They are purchasing the property from the CRA for $600,000?
That is correct.
And we, and the CRA in turn, will give them $500,000?
That is correct.
What happens if these plans don't?
Come to fruition?
Yeah. That's a good thing. You know, in other words, what happens if they walk away, or they start, and after a couple of years, they go bankrupt or just close down?
That is an excellent question, and that's part of the reason that we've spread the payments out over 10 years, and that we'll have a first interest on the mortgage, so to speak. So the CRA is really acting as a lender. They will pay the purchase price of $600,000 over 10 years. So we want to make sure, this is a partnership. We know this has some risk to it, this endeavor. So the way that it's set up, we will provide the grant money upfront to help them get the plans in place, to get their business going. All of our money is limited to exterior building improvements and site improvements, right? So they have to buy all the brewing equipment, they have to pay their staff, they have to do the interior work. But if, for some reason, you'll see in here, if they aren't open within 18 months, reverts back to the CRA, the property reverts back to the CRA. If they, for some reason, go out of business in year five or year seven, right, then we hold the title.
Yeah, so for 10 years, we're protected, is basically?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 4.2.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. I forgot to ask if anybody from the public wanted to speak to this motion? Okay, for this agenda item. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.3. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. Approve a grant agreement with 1100 Cleveland LLC in the amount of $400,000 for street-view improvements as part of the 1100 Apex mixed-use development, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same. I have Mr. Larry Debb here, who is the developer for Apex 1100. So he'll explain briefly the improvements that he's looking to make. I do want to say that this is a request that came through our incentive request form, right? So we didn't have a specific program for this, but that's what this form was designed for, to vet these kind of opportunities, and that we believe this investment is in line with our downtown redevelopment plan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, good afternoon and good morning, and thank you. Thank you all for helping me and your staff for helping me create what was an eyesore into what I think is really a beautiful apartment building. I hope you all feel the same way. We're getting close. We're within about a month of occupancy, so, and marketing's been doing well. Two things have changed since the first time we took a look at this project, and they're both positive. But one is that the amenity package that's required by tenants and does not exist in downtown Cleveland now has increased dramatically. People want everything. So what we've added, for instance, we have an outdoor theater, we have an outdoor putting green, an outdoor billiards table, outdoor grills, of course, hot tub and pool, interior full health club, a yoga room, a fitness-on-the-main room, office space that tenants can use free of charge, conference room facilities, an indoor theater, a dogwash facility, an indoor dog walking area, and the list goes on and on. A gourmet kitchen for the tenants to use. Since these units get smaller and smaller, especially the younger kids, when they have friends over, they want to have a really nice, so we have a gourmet kitchen that they can use now. So we spent a lot of money on upgrading the interior in this amenity package for our people. In our leasing, we started, we have 15 leases, and things are really going well, so we're excited about that. The second thing that's happened is we have two users for our retail space. One is a full-service Italian restaurant as well, pizza, spaghetti, not real high-end, but not the lower end either, right in the middle. It's a chain in the Chicago area that's coming down here to Florida. The second is the bakery that'll be open in the mornings, will service my tenants as well as the general marketplace. Their requirements have required us to upgrade the building, and that includes, in the front of the building, additional lighting, additional pavers, furniture, new storefronts to their specific design, more landscaping, canopies, and the list kind of is outlined here in front of you also. So when we were talking, we said, you know, two important things. One is, thank you, city, for giving us that parking kitty corner from us, because that was critical, because we really don't have any other parking for a restaurant-type use. And then, how do we provide, the marketplace provide our tenants with these type of things that they require under the lease? And so we've come in front of you, hands open and asking, please help me finish my building and get these two tenants in there. Be happy to answer any specific questions that you have, and I'd invite you all to come by. I think we're actually going to try to set up a ribbon-cutting in the next month or so, so I hope to see you all there.
Questions for staff on 4.3?
I just had a question. A square foot, there are two restaurants, right? And the approximate square footage of each one?
About four, I don't want to misquote it now. The Italian restaurant will be much larger. The bakery's about 1,000 feet, the other one's about 3,000, maybe slightly more. It'll have a brick oven for pizzas, sort of a brick oven pizza, which the fragrance will bring people in.
Ms. Thompson, I'm a little concerned here. We're approving $400,000 for amenities, and this is where I got confused, because we were talking about putting greens, and we were talking about dogwash areas.
Those I've paid for. I'm not asking for money for that.
And we're talking about, you know, things for the businesses that we already have a lease on. So I'm confused as to, you know...
We don't have a lease. We have two leases ready for signature, but we can't do those leases without some of these improvements. The reason I mention all those other amenities is I've paid for those. I've spent up all my contingencies, so now that I come with two tenants that want additional, and that's why I'm looking for some help.
And that's what I'm trying to get clarified, sir.
Absolutely.
Sure. So in addition, I think that Mr. Debb's really excited about the amenities, as we all are, but there's also been, in construction, a huge labor shortage, right? So part of the timing, right, and being able to complete the project within their original timeframe and cost of materials, those costs have gone up dramatically. And so at this point, what you're looking at is they could do a bare minimum, just meet minimum code, not even our new downtown design standards, because those were adopted in progress, right? They could complete the project with just doing a bare minimum type finish. And what this is going to allow them to do, specifically with the green wall on the parking garage, right, the enhanced stucco and paint on the outdoors, the railings, the lightings, is help them to provide a higher level of quality in the streetscape and in the first-floor building facade. And that's really our redevelopment plan goals, right? That's why we're investing the public dollars there.
So all the money that we're going to be providing is going to go to outdoor improvements and not indoor?
That is correct.
That's what I wanted to hear.
I mean, all the indoor...
Yeah, no, no, no. I wanted us to get clarified, because when you throw out things, you know, some people only hear, you know, certain items, okay? So the money isn't going to enhancements for the tenants, I mean, for the residents, rather it's going for the businesses, and it meets our plan goals?
That is correct. Having the enhanced streetscape and a beautiful building will attract more residents, right, to live in the apartment complex, and will support, we want those restaurants to be successful, right? We want to give them their best foot forward to start off. But all public money are spent on public improvements visible from the right of way.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson.
Well, I'm glad you asked that, because I had written down street view, exactly what does that mean, so it's good you explained it. Thank you.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak to Agenda Item 4.3? Thank you. Can we ask that you give us your name and make sure that the clerk has your name and address?
Oh, yes. It's Mark Punker, and I live at 1200...
No, you don't have to give us your address, just make sure that the clerk...
Oh, I used to have to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. So as I was listening to the list of amenities that were added to this complex, my head went woozy. I think around the time of indoor dogwalk area, I said, wow! And I missed some of the other things that came after that. But $400,000, couldn't that be better used for affordable housing, for people who really need it? If these people can spend so much money putting in all these things to lure people in to their expensive homes, it seems to me that they'd be able to pay to make the outside of their superior experience look good by themselves. It just seems like there are a lot of poor people who would never be able to probably even eat at one of the restaurants in there, are helping foot the bill for this. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to Agenda Item 4.3? Not a close public comment, is there a motion, please?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 4.3.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.3. Comments, council? Mr. Hamilton?
I think, you know, the comment I can make is, you know, the CRA, the whole process for the CRA is to enhance the area in which it's defined by our CRA, using the funding, the tax funding that comes from that. The increased taxes we're going to receive just from the improvements from this building alone come back to the CRA, and will give us a chance to invest more money as we go forward. We could sit on money and wait until we have that exact affordable housing project or whatever, but this is an investment. This is business one-on-one. You've got to spend money to make money, and this is an investment in the CRA, in the CRA district, that will bring additional revenue on the back end and also probably help kick-start somebody looking to say, hey, this is where I can be, this is where I want to help, you know, and build some affordable housing. So, you know, to just sit on money and wait until somebody comes forward with an opportunity to build affordable housing, I'd rather invest the money and have it generate additional revenue because we invested this money. So I'm fine with this proposal.
Mr. Cundan?
I have a question, if I may, for our director. Do we have affordable and mixed-use housing in progress now and in the near-term process?
Yes, and I was going to let you know in my updates, we're actually going to be issuing two requests for proposals in the next 30 days for a tax credit project, which will be low-to-mod income on one site, and then mixed income on the second site. We take affordable housing, as does our Economic Development and Housing Department, very seriously. Something that is ironic, that's not typical in most communities, we actually lack market-rate rental projects. And this is a rental apartment project, which is very important housing for our tech employees, for our hospital employees, for those that don't need subsidized housing, but, you know, they don't have anywhere to live downtown right now. The Nolan is the only market-rate apartment project. So that's why this one is important, but we are also issuing RFPs for, you know, subsidized and workforce housing, because we have to provide housing across the spectrum, right?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.3. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.4.
Thank you. Amend the loan to grant agreement with Tequila's Mexican Grill and Cantina LLC at 422 Cleveland Street to extend the agreement through October 1st, 2019, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same. Again, Tequila's is very close to opening, they just had one issue with a walk-in cooler. They have requested an extension, and we would like to support that request.
Questions for staff? Mr. Albrecht?
We talked about this before. Are they, I mean, we're giving them till October 1st, but is this something that they're so close that it may happen in the next four to five weeks?
I believe that it can happen in the next month. However, I'm trying to be smarter, right? And we know construction can be highly unpredictable, so I don't want to come back in four weeks, because there was another issue. I think that three months is a safe space, but they will be open sooner than three months.
Thank you.
And again, Ms. Thompson, as I asked before, is this delay something caused by the city or is it just because of the cooler that you had mentioned?
This delay was not caused by the city.
Okay. Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.4? Motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 4.4.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.4. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Thompson, do you have anything else for the CRA trustees?
I do. I just have some quick updates for you all, and then we'll be back next month with the PowerPoint on the 18-month strategy. First of all, we are an opportunity zone in downtown, and if you haven't seen this Invest Tampa Bay, this is an industry book for, you know, real estate and business, other kinds of investment. We have a lovely ad on the back, and I just encourage anyone who is interested in investing in our opportunity zone to please contact me. I let you know about the two RFPs we're going to issue for housing. And then we also still have some outstanding grants for other food and drink tenants, so please go to downtownclearwater.com for information on those sites. The Dreams of Dali exhibition closed on June 30th. We had over 4,200 visitors in six months. Out of the survey, so five being the highest, 4.7. We got a rating of 4.7 for people who said they would like to return to downtown Clearwater again because of their experience with this exhibit. We also learned that word of mouth, by far, is the way that people learn about things. So even though we had, you know, Facebook campaigns, we had Jolly Trolley ads, right, we had print ads, it's still word of mouth. And what that says to us is that it's very important that we keep doing events, we keep doing these targeted meetings, whether they're one-on-one or small groups, that we have to keep issuing invitations for different people to come downtown and connect with us, and then encouraging them to share that, their experience with their friends. Our next steps is that we're working with USF's 3D Open Access Lab to develop augmented reality applications. So that's an app that you put on your phone. You'll be able to hold up your phone over our murals, and they will come to life in some way. I haven't figured out what way yet. But that way, we're kind of extending, right, this arts experience throughout downtown. And last but not least, I don't think it's ever too early to celebrate the holidays, even though we haven't been through Halloween and Thanksgiving yet. even though we haven't been through Halloween and Thanksgiving yet, but we're going to do Christmas in July, so July 25th. You can see a free movie Miracle on 34th Street at the Capitol Theater. We're partnering with our police and fire departments, so if you bring a toy, you'll get a free popcorn and a fountain drink. You also can take a picture with a police officer, you can, I think, stand next to, I don't know if they'll let you get on the fire truck. We'll see. But July 25th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., Capitol Theater, we want to start kicking off building partnerships and letting you know what's going to happen through the holiday season. So bring a toy, have some popcorn, and enjoy air conditioning and a movie.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we will adjourn the CRA and reconvene our work session for July 17th, no, 15th. Agenda item 3.1, Mr. Horn.
I'm Bill Horn, your City Manager. Kayleen Castle and I will present the millage rate request and the overview of the budget. I want to thank you all again for approving this current budget. It was a very ambitious budget. You all approved the millage rate that is forward-looking and will help us meet the challenges that we're facing going forward. In light of that, we have provided you a balanced budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. All of our directors work very hard and, and want to do their jobs better. They obviously need more resources, more staffing and equipment dollars to do it. The reality is, we can only do so much and we can only afford so much. So this balanced budget represents what we believe is our best effort at doing that, but yet we acknowledge that we aren't able to do everything that we'd like to do. That's, that's, that's more in the dream category. We're going to be focused on maintaining current facilities and services. I think you all know that our facilities are aging, and as they age, it requires us to make sure that our maintenance programs are sufficient to keep them in good shape, that we maintain the curb appeal that, that has come to characterize what Clearwater's all about. So that's part of our focus. A high priority of yours is Imagine Clearwater. We have included monies in the budget to go toward funding parts of Imagine Clearwater. That is our priority, so we're not going to get distracted by anything else. And as a result of that, as we look to the future, we know that we have to limit expenditure growth. And so I know there may be some great ideas that people will pitch that we should get involved in, but all of that has to be considered in the context of where our priorities are. We know Imagine Clearwater is at the, is at the top of that list. And then also, you know, our over 70-year experience and relationship with the Philadelphia Phillies, how that relationship, how their presence has benefited our community for so many years, and now we're looking at another agreement, you know, as to, as to going forward. So, we, we know that those two things will, I think, impact our financial stability as we go forward to making sure that we can accomplish those priorities while at the same time take care of our needs. So at this time, I'm going to have Kayleen come forward. She's going to give you an overview of our budget, and then we'll handle, respond to any questions you have.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Kayleen Castle, Budget Manager. The 2019-20 proposed budget for all city operating funds, the special revenue funds, and the capital improvement fund is $542,194,290. This reflects a 1% decrease from the 2018-19 amended total city budget. These budget totals in the operating funds include medical and life insurance costs, the required pension contribution of 11.48%, the cost for property and liability and workers' compensation insurances, all approved union salary increases, and increases related to the employee classification and compensation study that were estimated at $3.6 million citywide. The general fund budget for fiscal year 20 reflects a 1% increase from the current year, mid-year amended budget. The utility funds total, which includes the budget for water and sewer, stormwater, gas, and the solid waste and recycling operations, reflect a 1% increase from fiscal year 19 amended. The enterprise fund totals, which includes the budget for our marine, airpark, Clearwater Harbor Marina, and parking operations, is budgeted at a 5% increase over the amended fiscal year 19 budget. This increase is due to increased capital transfers in the parking fund, as well as operating costs for the first year of operations of the Seminole Street Boat Ramp in the Old Bay North Marina District, which is planned to reopen early 2020. The internal service funds total includes the budget for information technology, utility customer service, building and maintenance, fleet and radio communications, and the central insurance fund, which supports the operations of risk management, employee benefits, the employee health clinic, and the budget for all city insurances. The budget for both the internal service funds and the special revenue funds reflect a decrease of less than 1% in comparison to the current year amended budget. And the capital improvement fund reflects an 8% decrease from fiscal year 19, which is primarily due to decreased funding for general government projects in comparison to the current year. This chart represents the change in property values over the last 11 years. Our 2019 certified values received from the Pinellas County Property Appraiser on June 28th reflect an increase in property values of approximately 6.8% from $11.2 billion in 2018 to $11.9 billion. As you can see on this chart, following 2008 to 2012's five-year cumulative decrease in values of approximately 33%, this is the seventh year of value growth. As of last year, the total property values in Clearwater have fully recovered from recessionary years, and we are now experiencing new growth. The proposed millage rate of 5.9550 mills is recommended by the City Manager for fiscal year 2019-20. This is the same rate as levied in the current year. Due to the value growth, this proposed rate is 6.01% greater than the rollback rate, or what we typically refer to as the revenue-neutral rate. The rollback rate is the millage rate that will provide the city with the same property tax revenue as was received in the prior year and wouldn't recognize any inflationary Using the proposed millage rate, property tax revenues are projected to be $68.2 million in fiscal year 20. This represents an increase of approximately $4.4 million, or 6.8% over the fiscal year 19 budget. Of the $68.2 million projected, approximately $64.9 million will support general fund operations, and $3.2 million represents the road millage used for maintenance of city Revenues that support general fund operations reflect a net increase of 1% from fiscal year 2019 amended revenues. As discussed on the previous slide, ad valorem tax revenues are budgeted at approximately $64.9 million, which is approximately a 7% increase from the current budget. This revenue source accounts for approximately 42% of total general fund revenue. The category of other taxes includes communication service tax and local business tax revenue. A decrease of 1% is anticipated to better project local business tax receipts. The other revenue category reflects a 9% decrease in comparison to fiscal year 19 amended revenues, due to the land sale revenues received earlier this year. Adjusted for that one-time revenue increase, the annual revenues in this category are projected to increase by approximately 15%, primarily due to increased interest earnings and increases in revenue from beach rentals. As you can see here, the general fund expenditure budget reflects a net increase of 1% across all operations in comparison to the current year amended budget. The Parks and Recreation Department is budgeted at a 7% increase, primarily due to personnel costs and increases for internal service charges. The library reflects a 6% increase, primarily due to increased personnel costs. Planning and development reflects a 7% increase, also due to personnel costs and the construction or contractual services for building inspection costs. The budget for non-departmental, the non-departmental includes the cost for minor general expenses, property and liability insurance, a transfer to the CRA for the city share of ad valorem taxes, and transfers to the capital fund for ongoing maintenance projects at general government facilities. Non-departmental reflects a decrease of 28% in comparison to the current amended budget, and this is partially due to one-time spike in the current year for the Crest Lake Park transfer, as well as an amendment earlier, earlier this year for the purchase of the former North Ward School property. The fiscal year 20 budget reflects decreased costs for property and liability insurance, as well as transfers to the capital fund in comparison to the current year. This chart shows the general fund expenditure budget by department. The budget for public safety is approximately 48.5% of the total general fund budget, with the police department representing 29.5% and the fire department representing 19% of that total. The budget for Parks and Recreation reflects 21% of the total general fund budget, and as a reminder, Parks and Recreation also includes citywide grounds and landscape maintenance, urban forestry, streets and sidewalk maintenance, as well as the operations of Pier 60 and the sailing center. The budget for non-departmental represents 7% of the total general fund budget. This is a decrease from 10% in the current year for the, the reasons that I mentioned earlier, mostly that transfer to, for the Crest Lake Park project. All departments represented on this slide represent approximately the same or slight increase in percentage of total from the current year. This chart represents the total general fund budget by category. Personnel costs continue to be our largest expense at 62% of total, which is the same percentage of total as the current year. Operating expenditures represent the next largest category at approximately 15% of total. Internal service charges, which represent 13% of the general fund budget, reflect costs associated with our internal support departments, including information technology, building and maintenance, fleet, risk management, and employee benefits. This is an increase from 12% of total in the current year. The budget for inter-fund transfers represent 9% of total general fund expenditures, and debt and capital expenditures combined represent approximately 1% of the total general fund budget. Debt costs are related to financing for vehicles and equipment for general fund operations, with fire vehicles representing approximately 60% of this total, and new patrol cars for the police department approximately 22% of that total. Capital expenditures in this category include the library's book budget and purchases of small machinery and equipment which meet a capital cost threshold. A total of 1,836.6 full-time equivalent positions are proposed across all funds for fiscal year 20. This is an increase of two FTEs from the 2019 amended budget. This is a net increase of one FTE in the general fund for the addition of a construction inspector in engineering and a police information technician, that's offset by the elimination of one fire medic position. Enterprise fund FTEs are increased by the addition of one marine facility operator position to cover increased staffing needs at the soon-to-be reopened Seminole Street Boat Ramp and the Clearwater Harbor Marina. In this graph, the sand-colored portion represents general fund FTEs, which are budgeted at 1,101.6 positions for fiscal year 20. This is a 179.9 FTE, FTEs less than our peak of 1,281.5 general fund positions in 2007. In comparison, the green portion, which represents all other funds, are budgeted at 735 FTEs for fiscal year 20, and this is approximately 62.2 positions greater than For the capital improvement fund, just as a reminder in the preliminary document that you received, we identify changes from the current year's plan by striking and bolding the font, so you can recognize those changes and deletions. This slide represents the categorical breakdown of the capital improvement fund budget for fiscal year 20. Funding of projects for utilities, which includes stormwater, water and sewer, gas, and solid waste and recycling, is planned at $55.7 million. This continues to be our largest expense at approximately 59% of the total capital improvement budget. General fund projects are estimated at $27.6 million, representing 29% of total capital funding. This includes projects for police, fire, streets and sidewalks, parks and recreation facilities, libraries, and maintenance of city buildings and facilities that operate general government functions. Projects in support of internal service operations are planned at $10.5 million, or 11% of total capital funding. These projects support fleet, radio communications, general services, information technology, and utility customer service. The capital budget for small enterprise funds is estimated at $1.3 million for fiscal year 20. This provides funding for capital repair and maintenance of the airpark, both marinas and parking facilities. We would like to schedule a special budget meeting in August to further discuss the proposed budget. These two meeting dates are currently held on your calendars, Tuesday, August 13th at 3:00 p.m., or Thursday, August 22nd at 3:00 p.m. And if there are specific type, topics that you would like, if you'd please discuss that with the City Manager, so we can prepare any documents necessary. So the action requested of you on Thursday is to set the tentative millage rate, which the City Manager has proposed at 5.9550 mills, and set the two public hearing dates for September. This information is provided to the county for inclusion and trim notices mailed to the residents in August. Just to note, if you set the tentative millage rate at the proposed 5.955 mills, it can be reduced in September, but it cannot go higher without a first-class mailing to all residents at our expense. Our first public hearing is planned as part of the regularly scheduled council meeting on Thursday, September 5th, and the second to adopt the budget will be on Thursday, September 19th, both beginning at 6:00 p.m. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we get to the questions, let's clarify the meeting date first.
Yes.
The special meeting that you want in August, you're calling that a council meeting or a council work session?
I believe it'll be a council meeting.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so.
Because if, if you all need to make any decisions, you know, relative to your discussions, you can do it right then.
Okay. Then the question is, should it be at 3:00 o'clock or should it be at 6:00 o'clock?
Actually, doesn't require you to have it at 6:00 o'clock. It's really for, for staff to present, and you ask questions of staff and provide any direction through motions to staff. So technically speaking, we're not required to have it at 6:00 o'clock.
This is past practice. I mean, the, the timeframe, we've always used it. If you want to change it, then you certainly can do that.
And I always thought it was more of a, more of like a work session type meeting, as opposed, since the actual public hearing is, is in September. But, council, any thoughts from y'all?
I'm good with three. I think it gives staff some more, gives us time to discuss, as opposed to the six and running late. I mean, if, if that's past practice, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. All right. Can, can we do it on the 22nd then? Because we have a meeting on the 14th, a council meeting on the 14th of August?
It's a Wednesday.
I'm good, 22nd.
Oh, we do, yeah.
Okay. So we'll set that meeting for August the 22nd?
We'll probably change the language for you to adopt that meeting on Thursday night.
Okay.
Okay.
Questions, council? Ms. Kandamp?
Not really a question, I just need to check my teaching schedule in the fall to see if there's a conflict.
Okay.
Which most likely won't be, but it might be.
So you don't know what your schedule is?
For August?
Yeah. Okay.
So far, it's just one class, so it's half of the difficulty it might be.
Would you know between now and Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. Y'all have no questions? All right, was, no questions from y'all?
No.
All right, well, let me clarify a couple things, because first off, it always bothers me when we have a chart on the property values, this chart that you have, and it shows that, you know, the last year, which is 2008, is 10.2, and now we're up to 11.9. But we were at 11.9.
We were at our peak at 11.2, which was just the year prior that has fallen off.
Right. Could we incorporate that here so that, you know, without too much trouble, if possible?
Yeah, I'll put that in for Thursday.
Okay. Then my other question, and I need some guidance, because, you know, you can do whatever you want with statistics. And I'm reading at one point that our overall budget is increased by 1%, or it's decreased by 1%. And yet I read that the rollback rate is 6% higher, or the proposed millage rate is 6% higher than the rollback rate. Somebody's going to ask me, if the rollback rate is 6, if the millage rate is 6% higher than the rollback rate, and your total budget goes down by 1%, why are you getting 7% more money? you getting seven percent more money?
Well, the total budget includes capital transfers, all operating funds, and the millage rate is one revenue source of that total.
That's what I want, that's why I'm asking the question, so that we could clarify, because some, you know, somebody doesn't, you know, a lot of people don't understand statistics, statistics. They take one number from here and one number from there, and all of a sudden, you've got a twenty-five percent, you know, increase in your millage rate, you know?
Right. And that only funds the general fund. So the general fund actually hasn't increased. It's only one percent in comparison to the amended budget, but that revenue source is forty-two percent of total general fund revenues. More statistics for you.
Right. So the bottom line is that the millage rate does not pay for all of the general fund expenditures?
It does not. It does not even cover public safety.
Okay. That, no, that's, that's what I'm wanting to get out, you know, so that people will understand that the millage rate doesn't cover all of our expenses. And the other thing that I always do at this point is explain how much of my total budget, a total tax bill, does the city of Clearwater get?
I think it's about twenty-five percent. Our increase went up a little last year with our millage increase, but I, I don't have that figure with me, but I still believe we're about twenty-five, twenty-five to twenty-seven percent of total.
Okay. Last year, I think we were using a third?
We might have...
Yeah, okay. But, but again...
We've had that on the slide in the past.
Yeah.
I always have it for the final budget in September, and I'll have examples of what a tax bill looks like. But without knowing what the millage rate is going to be, I don't have that information.
Okay. But again, for purposes of clarification, because there are a lot of people out there who say that my taxes are too high, and here's another example of, you know, why don't you rollback? If, if, using last year's numbers, if it's a third and my total tax bill is three thousand dollars, how much does the city of Clearwater get?
A thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars.
I do know that the Save Our Homes cap is one point nine percent. So any homesteaded property value won't go up more than one point nine percent.
Okay.
So I do have that figure for you.
Okay. Very good. This will be on our discussion for Thursday night, then?
Correct.
Right. Okay? Very good. Thank you. Agenda item four point one.
Approve Engineer of Record Supplemental Work Order One to McKimmy Creed, Inc., in the amount of ninety-six thousand dollars, ninety-six thousand, six hundred dollars for inflow and infiltration flow monitoring, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Jeremy Brown. I'm the Engineering Manager for Utilities. This work order is to continue collecting flow data while a new contract is being developed. The data is used to identify significant sources of inflow and infiltration, also known as INI, and can also be used to verify that sanitary sewer repairs are effective and the INI has been reduced. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions for staff on Agenda Item four point one? Consent? Four point two.
Approve Engineer of Record E R Supplemental Work Order One to Atkins North America in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars for Cooper's Point, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Ms. Kessler.
Good morning, Mayor. Council members. My name is Sarah Kessler, Environmental Specialist in the Engineering Department. The additional effort outlined in the supplemental work order will move us closer to commitments from our funding partners. Additional field work and modeling work addresses the needs of FDOT, and additional meetings with local governments and agencies will present opportunities for mitigation credits through a financial partnership. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item four point two? Does this work interfere at all, or how does it play in with the new college that is going on, is being built?
So it doesn't interfere at all. We've already constructed the culvert that's part of this, part of our master plan, and so we've already worked with them to make that process complete. So any additional projects that we have won't interfere with them at all.
Okay. And access through their, will we have to go through their campus for access to...
So the agreement that we've made with them is access to Cooper's Point. There's a road that goes back to access our property, and that access road is just for city staff for maintenance purposes and for mosquito control. And so part of the master plan was providing access to the public from another trailhead, the D, is it DEP property that's at the corner of Bay Shore and Gulf to Bay? And the master plan will develop a trailhead there to allow access to the public. The public won't be driving through the campus to access Cooper's Point in the future.
But that's down the road after we...
That's down the road, yeah.
Okay. Consent? Agenda Item four point three.
Approve a five-year agreement with Corolla Engineers, Inc. of Sarasota, Florida, in the amount of one million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars for water treatment plant number two system improvements, Phase A, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Brown, again.
Good morning. Again, my name is Jeremy Brown. I'm the Engineering Manager for Utilities. Council, we've held one-on-ones on this topic. The overall goal of the project is to make improvements to Water Treatment Plant Two to allow it to process and produce more water. The work order before you today is for Phase A, and that includes a thorough review of the facility's processes and multiple assessments and evaluations to develop recommended improvements. This work order also includes both bench and full-scale testing of those recommended improvements prior to moving Phase B, which will be the design. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions on four point three? Consent? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kunda.
And this is budgeted money already.
That's correct. Public Utilities already has the funds.
Consent?
Thank you.
Four point four.
Approve Supplemental One Work Order to Standtech for Design and Construction Administration for Phase One of Imagine Clearwater in the amount of five million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Delk.
Mayor, Council, Michael Delk, interim Assistant City Manager. This is the, really, the large, significant work order to design the park from Drew Street down to Pierce in the entirety with preparation of constructing in an initial phase, a Phase One that is now comprises two-thirds of the park. I think, as we've told you previously in some of our one-on-one discussions, the full permitting and construction documents will be prepared during this phase. We're going to spend this, this summer working with the architect and the landscape architects on the structures themselves that are going into the park. We want to make sure that we achieve everything that we want to achieve with regard to the architectural and placemaking components of those key structures that we're getting ready to build. So this is the next major step, obviously, the big step in moving the entire project forward. We recommend your approval. We have Hameed with Standtech, and Tim is here as well, so there's more details. But generally, this is where the design-construction work gets started, so we're ready to proceed.
Any questions of staff on four point four? Ms. Kunda?
Well, number one, I'm wondering if this is a large enough figure to pull it off with consent and talk about it on Thursday. I'm all in favor of the project, but I'd like to have a little more public input and discussion on it, and maybe that way the public can know in, and go through it in a little more detail of what...
Are there any particular questions or components of the, the design work that you, you think we might want to focus on between now and Thursday?
Just briefly, how that five point six million is going to be spent.
Okay.
How much on which projects?
Well, I think, you know, design-construction documents, permitting documents, if you will, are quite detailed and quite involved, and I think you all are aware of how kind of a complicated environment we have. So this will be the final engineering and design documents for the entire project, including the architectural components of it, as we continue to define those. But we'll...
Yeah. Let me make it easier.
Okay.
Okay. We were going to pull this, because you know somebody on Thursday night is going to ask you to come off of the consent agenda. So just, you know, whether we had any questions or not, it was going to get pulled off of consent.
All right. Very well.
Mr. Albritton?
As you know, I'm real in support of moving forward on this project, and I think going into this phase will give us more detail, at least answer a lot of my questions, hopefully. Question I have for you is, when do you think that some of those plans will be able to be brought to us during that, I guess, how long do you think it will take for them to draw everything? And are we going to wait till the very end to get it, or are we going to get little updates on some of that?
Well, I don't, I don't have a timeline to bring it back to you, but I certainly think it would be inappropriate to wait till the end to bring it back to you. So there's probably going to be some key, key opportunities along the way as we continue to define in more detail some of the specifics of the facilities, and that's, that'll be a good time for us to talk to you about coming back at one of our regular updates and, and walking you through that. So exactly what those dates are at this point, I don't know. It's one of the reasons we're here. In July, we had one meeting. We did this pretty hurriedly, late last week, but I didn't want to lose a month, as you 're well. With the one, one meeting today, it would have been August. So, but we can, we're going to, we'll, we'll want to bring it back and kind of update you along the way. And I, you know, frankly, I think we ought to update our community along the way and let them know what we're designing. So we've not forgotten about that part.
Good. Ms. Paulus.
Thank you. Just to segue off of that, Councilmember Albritton, I think it's important to note that the final design architectural components, we're still going, we haven't totally decided on them. We know geometrically where everything's going, the layout of the park, but exactly what the buildings, what the structures are going to look like. So we'll have input as we go forward. So this is an ongoing process. They're going to bring us a palette of, okay, you have this option, this option, this option. So we'll be involved along the way.
That's correct. We're, the, the design of the park, the green space, the open space, the facilities for that, we're going to get out of Hameed's way and let them do what they need to do over that. And that's where the next couple, three months is going to afford us an opportunity to work much more closely with the architects on the specific design of these major structures. You know, the centerpiece of this is our stage and that facility, and we want that to be the kind of sense of really community in place that it ought to be, given the, this, the extent of this large project that we're building. So that ought to be a really noteworthy piece of architecture. So we're going to try to work with them to accomplish that, and a theme throughout the park, so.
We'll discuss this, then. Ms. Kunda?
If I could just ask one more question, which I missed Thursday night also. These funds are already budgeted in our...
Yes, these are.
Ms. Horn?
Mayor, if I can make one comment, I'm reminded of some of the comments you have made in the past. I'd like for all of you as council members to kind of be thinking about how, what kind of interface do you want to have with us as we go through the process? I'm always concerned about designing things by committee, and, and so I know there's going to be opportunities for you to give input, but at some point, we have, we should be sensitive to how making changes and, and the impact of those can affect what has been your overall goal, and that is for us to, to move forward and get, and get things done. So just think about, when you talk to me, you know, what, what are your expectations so that Michael will know, you know, how to meet your needs as we go through this, this new phase of this project?
Mr. Horn, thank you for saying that. You almost took the words out of my mouth. I was going to save mine for Thursday night. But council, his point is very valid. Every time we make a decision and then turn around and change it one month or two months later, the date of finishing the project gets pushed back. And the dream that all of us have of having this project completed will never happen. It will remain a dream. When we listen to one person tell us to do something, and, you know, a month later we come and say, well, why don't we do this? There are other people out there who are saying, don't do anything. You've changed what you asked us to vote on. And so we need to stay focused on what we've done to get it done, because that's what the public expects. And we can't go back and revisit and revisit and revisit, because we will never get anything done. So thank you, Mr. Horn, for allowing me to say that today, if not again on Thursday. Agenda item five point one, and this will not be on consent. Agenda item five point one.
Approve the extension of the Emergency Medical Services ALS First Responder Growth Management Agreement between Anales County and City of Clearwater for one additional one-year term extending through September thirtieth, twenty twenty, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Chief Allen.
Good morning, Mayor. Council. Scott Ellis, Fire Chief, Clearwater Fire Rescue. This request is to approve the extension of the Emergency Medical Services ALS First Responder, that growth management portion that we talked about about a month ago, two months ago, which goes through September. As you may recall, the growth manager concept was an initiative that we helped spearhead in the county with other municipalities to help curb the continued increase in EMS runs. This component took the very low QD calls, which are the fall person or the sick person, or determinants, and just responded a BLS ambulance by itself, keeping the fire department or fire rescue ALS component still at, on the ready. In the first month of implementation, which was June to July, Clearwater had a decrease of two hundred and two calls with an average response time of eleven and a half minutes, which is about ninety-four percent compliance. If you remember, in the, in the aspect of it was, the response time was twenty minutes or less, so we'll meet that. We had initially anticipated reducing the calls, approximately twenty-three hundred calls a year, and with that number, we're right on par, which actually, it'll probably be go, will actually reduce a little bit more with the current one. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief on five point one? Consent? What happened to six point one? Six point one. Six point one.
Six point one. Authorize award of invitation to bid thirty-eight dash nineteen Storage Area Network Equipment to Extens, Inc. of Tampa, Florida for installation in support of a new sand, sand equipment in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, Council, Dan Mayer, Information Technology, excuse me. This is to replace our mass storage device that's used on our network for all our share files. The current system has been in use for approximately twelve years. It's aged out. This will be installed in our new data center out at Station Forty-Eight as part of our E O C project. One correction I did have, Extensys is not located in Tampa. It's still located in Osmar, Florida, with a move pending, we think. In addition, there will be a budget modification to, to increase the lease purchase authority in our project to pay for this bid award.
Any questions, Mr. Albritton?
Is this a cloud network, or is this, I mean, is this actual facility where we're storing?
Yes, yes. It's a, it's an actual piece of hardware. It's a rack with, with multiple drives in it. It uses a software that runs over the top and stores huge volumes of data. This is about a multi-terabyte. I think it's forty terabytes, is the total spec. We're not using a lot of cloud storage yet. We will be, but there's ongoing costs with cloud storage. There's also issues of security and performance. But we will be doing that to stem some of the risks associated with some of the malicious behavior that we've witnessed over the last month.
And that we read about other municipalities running into. I, I know that we revamped our website, because now we have, like Dropbox shared thing, storage and that, and I wasn't sure if this was part of that.
We still have a huge amount of stores of data for both systems and individual user files that exist on-site. Some types of documents are not practical to keep in the cloud, video, photographs, high-density documents associated with the upload and download. You don't get the performance people want.
Consent?
Ms. Kunda?
I just had a question, too, about this backup. Is there a backup for the storage area?
Yes. The entire environment is backed up multiple times. We're modifying some of that, hopefully, to increase its resiliency and reliability again. I did speak with an associate. There was an event in Alabama last week for a private... It was an event in Alabama last week for a private firm where a malicious software was in their system for several months before it was activated. The cause of it getting into their network was known and it was user-driven by permission. But, yeah, it's, I don't always sleep well. I try not to think about it, but it's something we're actively pursuing, we're aware of. We do a lot of networking. There's a tremendous amount of research. The companies involved with protecting networks and environments are very attentive to, to being responsive and agile and adding improvements to their software and their devices. It's a hostile world. It's a very hostile world on the internet, so we, we go through it every day.
6.2.
Authorize a contract in the amount of $320,000 to Spectrum Enterprise of St. Louis, Missouri for internet access and point-to-point data network services and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Spectrum has been in use by the city for a long time. It was previously Breithouse. We use it for internet access and we also use a lot of point-to-point access for some of our facilities. This is a multi-year plan. This is about six different locations and services that we're agreeing to with the full extent being of four years. If there's any questions, we have to answer.
Any questions of staff on 6.2? Consent?
Yep. Thank you.
7.1.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential urban and initial zoning atlas designation of low, medium-density residential district for an unaddressed parcel on Pine Place and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Brother.
Thank you. Cocke, Rutherford, Planning and Development. This voluntary annexation petition involves a 0.452 acre property consisting of one parcel of land which is currently vacant. The property does not currently receive any services from the city and the closest sanitary sewer and water lines are located within the Pine Place right-of-way and any future connections would occur through a utility and drainage easement to the southeast of this property. The applicant is aware that the sewer and, and water impact and assessment fees must be paid in full and if any additional cost to extend services to this property should it redevelop in the future.
Questions for staff on 7.1?
No.
Ms. Aiken, I had a question that just came up to me as we, Mr. Rutherford was talking and that was a conversation we had last week about laterals and the connections of sewer lines to our pipes and the problems that we read our, our utility departments, not only here in Clearwater, but really across the state have with homeowners not fixing their laterals and causing seepages into the environment. Is there some way that on these annexations, we can require a test of the laterals to have it, you know, have any problem corrected before they hook up to our lines?
I don't know that we've ever considered that.
Okay.
So, that is something we would have to look at.
To look at.
I cannot answer that question right now.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I figured, yeah, because I, I don't know, you know, what comes into play, but before we annex to make sure that we don't have a problem with their laterals. This will be on our agenda then for Thursday night without the question on the laterals. There'll, there'll be a future.
That will be a future discussion.
Yeah. 7.2.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low, medium-density residential district for 815 Glen Oak Avenue E. and 3053 Terrence View Lane and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Guevara.
Hello. This voluntary annexation petition involves two parcels of land totaling 0.374 acres. The applicants are requesting the annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer service from the city as part of the Cape Cod Terrace sanitary sewer service expansion. The properties will also receive solid waste service upon annexation. The applicants have paid the required fee and the properties are already connected to the sewer, to the city sewer service. The properties are contiguous to existing city limits along the, at least one of the boundaries and it's, it is proposed that the properties be assigned the future land use map designation of residential low and a zoning atlas designation of low, medium-density residential.
So, back to you, Ms. Aiken. Most of these properties are on SeptiTech, so they wouldn't have laterals connecting to us in the first place, would they?
They would not and I believe that we're involved in the installation of those laterals.
Here, I'm correcting my.
Jeremy Brown, Engineering Manager for Utilities. Yes, if this is Cape Cod, these are all new, new, new construction. So, they're brand-new PVC pipes.
But do we have properties, have we annexed properties that, that are connected to our sewer lines in the past or?
Mr. Porter might be able to speak to that. I don't believe so.
Okay. So, then my question is, you don't have to do all that work. See how I saved you time?
You did.
David Porter, Public Utilities. Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay. And Ms. Clayton is going to add.
Typically, people are annexing to actually get sewer service, so it's not really an issue.
Yeah, yeah. But it is an issue for those homeowners who are part of our system now who do not keep their laterals repaired. So, thank, thank all for letting me ask a question and answer it myself. Back to 7.2. Any other questions? It'll be on our agenda then for Thursday night. 7.3.
Approve a future land use map amendment for, from the residential low category to the residential urban category for 3003 Merrill Avenue, 3025 Merrill Avenue and 512 Moss Avenue and pass the appropriate ordinance on first reading. Mr. Guevara again.
Okay. This case involves three parcels with the total area of 1.3 acres of land. The parcels are located on the south side of Merrill Avenue and west of Moss Avenue. Currently, the properties are occupied by single-family homes. The request is to change the property's future land use map designation from residential low to residential urban. The current low, medium-density residential district is consistent with the proposed future land use designation. Therefore, there is no need to request a rezoning of the properties. The proposed residential urban future land use designation is compatible with the surrounding single-family residential uses as well as the sport complex located at the south of the properties. In addition, the proposal does not degrade the level of service for public facilities below the adopted standards. The requests do not conflict with the goals, objectives and policies of the Clearwater Comprehensive Plan and Forest State Plan as indicated in the goals, objectives and policy. The proposed residential urban future land use category is in character with the future land use map designations in the area. Further, the proposal is compatible with the surrounding uses and consistent with the character of the surrounding properties and the neighborhood. Based upon the findings of fact, the proposed change will increase the demand on several public facilities, but will not result in the degradation of the current levels of service for portable water, sanitary sewer or solid waste, parlor, stormwater management and streets. Based on the findings, findings of fact, it is determined that the proposed future land use map amendment will not negatively impact natural resources on the subject properties. On June 18th, DRC Development Review Committee unanimously recommended approval of the proposed future lands amendment and recommend approval to the city council.
Any questions on 7.3? Mr. Hamilton.
The, the question, and, and you kind of explained it right at the very end there, but we've, we've annexed a ton of these properties, a lot of these properties out in the Cape Cod Tree area, but they've all been from residential low to LMDR, medium, low, low to medium density. This is going from a residential low to an urban. Why in this same neighborhood, why are we doing these parcels as, as an RU versus an LMDR?
Basically, this is a proposal to do a urban renewal of some of the parcels. So, the property owners or the developer, they are asking for the change in order to be able to add two units more to two single-family house.
So, they're looking at building like townhouses or something that's a little more.
I don't, they haven't submitted any site plan proposal yet, but my understanding is that they are going to add single-family houses.
Wouldn't single-family homes be allowed in the LMDR, which is what we've already changed all of it to? That's why I'm not, not quite understanding this, but.
Let me explain what this is, residential urban.
Hi, good morning. Lauren Matsky, Planning and Development. So, the underlying land use, which is what's being requested to change affects your density and that's how many units you can fit on any particular property. They can build single-family through the existing zoning, but they're looking to add an additional unit, so kind of carving up slightly smaller lots and fit an additional unit in there to make the construction worthwhile. One of the property owners, owners joined on to this application so that the entire side of that block was the same future land use category, but it has not indicated any intentions of redeveloping their property. They just looked at it holistically.
Is, is there a height restriction change from residential?
The, the zoning district remains low, medium-density residential, compatible or the same as the surrounding zoning districts. So, the height is established through that. There would not be a change in maximum allowable height due to this application.
It looks like it's right along the Ream Wilson Trail and I'm trying to figure out what, what they're.
We can put a, I'm not using this one before. Is that?
Right, right, where that straight line is.
The, the trail runs across the mayor's, I remember correctly.
Mr. Albritton.
So, I'm trying to wrap my head around this too. What is the difference between residential urban and LMDR? You said it's going to remain LMDR, but it's going from residential low to residential urban.
Basically, is the density. The load, one allows for five units per acre and the other allows 7.5 units per acre. So, that's basically the big difference.
Which is more intensity.
So, what about LMDR?
So, again, to clarify, there, LMDR is the zoning district. Each property has two designations. They have the future land use designation, which is what determines your density and as Diego stated, the current density allowed is five units per acre. The proposed allows seven and a half units per acre, which based on the property size allows for the construction of an additional unit or two. The zoning stays the same because it's consistent with both future land use categories. Normally, y'all get kind of a package. You get the land use plan amendment and the rezoning together. It doesn't happen as often that we have something like this where the land use is changing, but there's no need to change the zoning.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. This will be on our agenda for Thursday night. 7.4.
Approve a development agreement between East Shore International Enterprises LLC and 411 East Street Property Owner and the City of Clearwater, providing for the allocation of eight units from the hotel density reserve pursuant to Beach By Design Adopt Resolution 19-06 and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Perry.
Thank you. Mark Perry, Planning and Development. There have been no changes to the conceptual site plan or elevations or the development agreement since our meeting last month. The proposal remains a 74-unit hotel. 55 units are otherwise permitted by the underlying land use. Eight units are proposed to be allocated to the site from the reserve and the applicant intends to transfer through a Level 2 flexible development application 11 additional units. There will be two uses on the site, overnight accommodations and a marina facility. 22 slips out of the 57-slip dock component, 22 slips will be available to the public. The remaining 35 slips will be available only to guests of the hotel. There was one question that was asked at the last meeting and that is whether fishing would be permitted from the boardwalk and the answer to that is no. So, no net casting, no fishing. Any questions that I can answer?
Questions for staff on 7.4? Mr. Kunda.
The total number of units is, was 74 and it's still 74.
Correct. There have been no changes at all.
Mr. Perry, clarify your statement or the statement that's written here. "The conceptual site plan and elevations continue to appear to be consistent with regard to the width, the setbacks, the height, the parking and the landscaping." What happens if something changes and it's no longer consistent?
Then we wouldn't be able to approve the site plan. I mean, all, all development proposals have to be consistent with any applicable regulations and that, that would be Beach By Design, the Community Development Code, the City's Comprehensive Plan. So, if something becomes non-compliant with our code, we would, we would be obligated to.
So, if we approve this and something changes and it's not going to be compliant on these five items, then it gets nexted?
It wouldn't be able to be moved forward at all.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would just, when it said continue to appear sort of.
But we, these are conceptual site plans. We will get a lot more detail as we move through the, the review process.
Any other questions, council? Mr. Hamilton?
I wasn't here last month, but I, I watched the video, but the, the parking for this hotel is across the street.
Some of it.
They're taking the parcel across the street and building. Is there parking going to be sufficient for the hotel and the marina usage?
Yes. Yes, they're providing all of their required parking.
And according to the drawing, the parking is going to go on a, on an area that is right now an existing swimming pool and that's associated with the small hotel next. Is the small hotel not part of this, is it the same ownership or?
The, there's four lots. The lot across the street, I believe, has been demoed. I believe it's.
Maybe it has now. I think it's right behind the Walgreens.
It's, it's, yeah, that's, that's been demoed.
Okay. But I can't remember. So many different things happen out there on a daily basis, it's hard to keep it all straight. Okay, I was just curious as how, you know, that the parking was going to be sufficient enough for what the marinas were.
Oh, yeah. They, they required 1.2 spaces per unit for the hotel and one space per two slips for the, for the marina facility component and they're providing 100 parking spaces. That meets all of their, their obligations.
We'll move on then to 7.5.
Authorize a community aesthetic features agreement between the City of Clearwater and the Florida Department of Transportation for a local identification marker, city logo, on a new pedestrian overpass bridge at Horn Boulevard in US 19 and adopt Resolution 19-11. Mr. Hartman.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Here to present this, what's called a CAFA agreement with Florida Department of Transportation so that we can continue with the branding and wayfinding for the City of Clearwater. This agreement was, there was a similar one adopted for the obelisk, Courtney Campbell a few years ago. And what it is, is that FDOT, any, anything that the city wishes to place within the state road right-of-way, we have to have an agreement with FDOT and the basis of the agreement is that if we're adding on the sign, that we have to pay or put on deposit a certain amount of money to remove it and reestablish the bridge as originally designed without the sign. So, this is an agreement for maintenance of the sign as well and just a promise on behalf of the city that we will maintain the sign as long as it's up there and such. So, it's something, it's a little different. We have already looked at a bridge that's on the Duke Trail. It's a slightly different bridge, so this one will have a tagline that is just more or less an adhesive below the mainframe of the sign. or less an adhesive below the mainframe of the sign that says Clearwater, and then the tagline, "Bright and Beautiful Bay of the Beach," will be adhered to below because there's not a lower lip, as there is with the Duke Trail sign. So we're asking for approval of this agreement, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them best to my ability.
Questions on 7.5? Mr. Kunda.
Sign be able to be seen from both sides, or just the, from the south?
That's a great question. Really, we're only concerned is the southern gateway, so we're looking at the south-facing sign, you know, we're not-
Not one you are now leaving.
You're leaving. Yes.
Can we do something like this on the one that goes across the Duke Trail on the north end?
Well, we can. You know, we have one already established for the Duke Trail. That is, here, let me-
Ms. Clayton's coming up with a, it's on the other side. Oh, there it is.
Yes.
We're, we're working with the county to try to do this because this bridge belongs to the county.
Okay.
And so we're trying to work out some maintenance issues, and hopefully we'll be able to resolve them to the satisfaction of our legal department and engineering department. And if so, then we would put a sign on the north side.
Yeah, it would be nice to have it on both, you know. And would there be a problem with the "Bright and Beautiful Bay of the Beach" on the north end? It was-
Originally, we had it designed without it, and now we're looking at having the tagline on the bridge, and we're still working with the county. We think the engineering that we had done would support it, but we haven't finalized that yet.
Don't you think it ought to be consistent, though? If we do, you know, one that says "Bright and Beautiful," then the other one ought to, and if we can't do it on one, then we probably shouldn't do it on the other?
We can certainly do it that way. That's what we're trying to get added to the Duke Energy.
Okay. This will be on our discussion item on our agenda for Thursday night. 7.6.
Approve an addendum to authorize the city an option for three one-year renewal periods for the contract between Property Registration Champions, LLC, a Florida limited liability company in the city of Clearwater, to manage the city's foreclosure property registry and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Ms. Clayton.
Good morning, Gina Clayton, Planning and Development Department. Back in March of 2017, you established our foreclosure property registry, and in July of that year, we entered into an agreement with Property Registration Champions, now they're known as ProChamps, to manage that registration. The fee that is collected is split between ProChamps and the city in the amount of $200, so we receive $100. To date, we've had 964 properties that have been registered, and we've collected $95,700 in revenues, and we have put that into a fund that is restricted, so we can only use that money for nuisance abatement purposes. And we have been using that money to pay cost of demolition and securing abandoned properties. The original agreement with ProChamps was for a period of two years with an option to extend the agreement for three one-year renewal terms, and the item before you would authorize the first one-year renewal that would take us through July 2020. So we are asking for your approval.
Any questions on 7.6? Consent? 8.1.
Authorize the award of invitation to bid, 28-19, manhole rings and covers to Fort Line Inc. of Tampa, Florida, in the annual not-to-exceed amount of $60,000 with two one-year extensions at the city's discretion, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Mr. Porter.
Good morning, David Porter, Public Utilities Director. I'm here this morning to ask you to authorize the award of a contract to Fort Line Inc. of Tampa, Florida, who will be providing us with necessary components to maintain our wastewater collection system. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of staff on 8.1?
These are, these are just the parts. These are just the actual rings and the manhole-
Correct.
Manhole covers. This isn't, has nothing to do with the installation and maintenance.
That's correct. These are just the components.
Consent?
Yes.
Thank you.
9.1, this call.
Appoint Christina Joseph to the Marina Advisory Board with term to expire July 31st, 2023. Council members, in your agenda pack, Ms. Joseph was the only applicant we have on file, and she is willing to serve in this capacity.
Consent? 9.2.
Appoint three members to the nuisance abatement board with terms to expire August 31st, 2023. Council members, some of our, a few of our current members are either, A, unable to serve another term or wish not to be reappointed. So in your agenda packs, I have applications for Mr. Gary Baker, Greg Brown, Patrick Rafferty, and Meg Taylor for your consideration.
Council?
I think all four, any three of the four would be fine with me. I think that what's interesting about this board is they haven't met very many times. It's been very sporadic, their actual need, but just the creation, what we, the action we took to create this board has definitely gotten the attention of the property owners that it, that become involved because of this. And we've had much better response from the property owners once they realize, wait a minute, this is, it used to just kind of be a, an empty, empty threat that we're, that something could happen. Now they're, now that we have this nuisance abatement board and they have the authority to impose issues on them, it's gotten their attention, so. But I look at all, I'm trying to remember, which one of the individuals was the attorney?
Mr. Baker.
Mr. Baker.
Mr. Baker.
He kind of stuck out to me as my number one.
He and, and, and Meg Taylor, because she's a graduate of Citizens Academy?
Yep.
So, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other one that rang a bell with me was the gentleman who lived here for 20 years.
Wow.
Was that, or is that one of the two that we already mentioned?
Right, Brown was on the code enforcement.
Somebody had been here for 20 years.
Oh, would like to play too.
Mr. Brown has, has been a Clearwater resident for 20 years.
Those three would be acceptable to me.
You want to put those then on consent?
Please, not consent.
That would be Baker, Brown, and Taylor. 9.3.
Appoint one member to the Sister Cities Advisory Board as the youth member representative to fill the remainder of an unexpired term through October 31st, 2020. Council members, Ms. Joseph had to resign because she's doing a study abroad session, so we have, for your consideration, Lucas Geraldi Smith and Ezekiel Joseph.
I like the, the letter submitted by Ms. Hayes, who's intimately involved with Sister Cities and, you know, gave a recommendation for Lucas Geraldi Smith. I put, I put, I give that some weight in my own, you know, in my dealings, I would recommend Lucas Geraldi Smith for that position.
Consent?
Agreement.
9.4.
Appoint Sue Hart to the Brownfields Advisory Board as the Clearwater resident member with a term to expire July 1st, 2023. Council member, she is the only individual that we have on file for your consideration.
Okay. Consent?
Yep.
9.5.
Designate a council member to serve as the city's official voting delegate at the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, August 15th to the 17th. Council member, the city is required, as a member, to have an official voting delegate. I believe the mayor is attending the conference, but I'm not sure if anyone else is, so I now open up the floor for your discussion to see who the official delegate will be.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
I'll nominate Councilmember Albrecht as our voting member, if he would like to do it and plans on attending.
The, the general meeting is on Saturday in the morning, and you, you will have to be in attendance.
Orlando?
Yes.
You have to be there Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Like I said, I know that the mayor is right now the only one that has made plans to attend.
15 through 17.
I mean, I'm okay with the mayor being the voting, voting person as well, if both of y'all are there.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna be there.
Doesn't matter to me.
Don't need me there.
I'm good with the mayor. The mayor's definitely gonna be there, and you're-
May I place that on consent with the mayor?
Just didn't want to.
I retract my motion and-
Well, there's no motion, but may I place that on consent with the mayor as the city's official delegate? Okay.
I add the League of Mayor's meetings that I'll be attending is part of that.
Okay.
Okay. So y'all want that on consent, or y'all want to bring that back? Just want to make sure.
I need to ask the residents.
Let's take our recess until 11:05.
Agenda item 10.1 is a second reading. Agenda item 10.2, 10.3, 10.4, 10.5, 10.6, 10.7, 10.8 are all second readings. Any questions on our second readings, 10-1 through 10-8? If not, we will go on to agenda item 11.1. Mr. Horne.
Fairer counsel, we have, I have six items under City Manager Verbal Reports, and I, it is possible, depending on the length of conversation involving some of them, we may not get to all of them. As long as we can get to them on Thursday night, I would appreciate it.
That scares me, Mr. Horne. Let's quickly get started.
But I want a corporate discussion, though. I'm not going to ask you to make decisions. I just need you all to discuss these as a corporate group for the first time, and then we go from there. All right, Mr., first one is going to be Spectrum Carpenter Agreement Update. Mr. Dunbar.
Good morning. Kevin Dunbar, Director of Parks and Recreation. Quarterly update for council on where we're at with the Spectrum Carpenter complex project. Always, I know if you've seen this picture before, but this is a pretty, a pretty neat picture just of the, of the overall complex of the investment that's been made there. I provided an update to the Government Affairs Committee of the Chamber, as well as the, the Board of the Chamber, and so both very well received. And your, the update is all our deliverables to Pinellas County are in. We are expecting to hear back from them early this week on if there's any additional information. When I say they're all in, they've been going in over time, and the last ones went in the latter part of last month. Once we have, so, you know, this will really begin that conversation with the county. Once we have funding agreements together with the, the city, the county, and the Phillies, we're going to be able to submit our grant application to the state. We have currently started working on that again, getting the pieces in place. My goal is to try to, by the end of the summer, to be at about 85, 90% of that. Obviously, we're going to need a lot of other pieces to be able to put together to do that, but we're working on all those things simultaneously. Little bit of background and just reminder, the Clearwater complex opened in, at Spectrum in 2004. Carpenter was in 1967. Why I like to show this slide is this shows the investment that has been made by the city and the team during that period of time. You know, we get compared sometimes to other projects, namely down in Northport with the Braves, as well as Dunedin with the Blue Jays. We've been making our investment over time, so this is, this is just the investment that's been made so far. At Spectrum Field, the team has put in 15.5 million since the ballpark's been constructed. constructed. The city's put in nine point nine. At Carpenter, the team's put in three million and the city's put in six point four million in a capital investment. Just a reminder, the overall project cost right now is at seventy-nine point seven million. Forty to forty-five of that'll be at Spectrum. Thirty-five to forty of that'll be at the Carpenter complex. You know, kind of the breakdown of where that comes from is twenty million from the state. Right now, we're projecting that to be worth about thirteen point seven million. About ten million will be from the team plus, is a very important plus. They have all cost overruns. Six million from the city, and that's in our penny for Pinellas funding program. And then the request from the county is still at four million dollars.
Six million or sixteen?
Sixteen, I'm sorry. Did I say six? I mean, six, yeah, sixteen. And then forty million from the, is a request from the tourist development council through the county. So, you know, currently, you know, at all of our complexes, this is where the funding combined has been currently. Eight point two million from the state, eight point two million from the county. That was the revenue streams that we received back in two thousand and two, two thousand and three that funded the original Spectrum Field. The city's invested sixteen point three million, and the biggest funder to date of the complexes has been the team at eighteen point five million. When you combine it together with the current request that we have, the state would be at twenty-one point nine, the county would be at forty-eight point two, the city would be at thirty-two point seven, and the team would be at twenty-eight point five plus all cost overruns on the project. So our total investment would be not that dissimilar to what you're seeing down in Northport with the Braves, which is, again, you know, one that gets, we get compared to. The total investment would be about a hundred and thirty-one million over that period of time. But that would be the breakdown of where the, of where each of the dollars would come from. Currently, a lot of things are going on. Design through construction drawings and budget estimates have been completed at the Carpenter complex. We're currently working towards getting a general contractor at risk onboard to begin the work at Carpenter once the funding has been identified. And Populous has been hired, and they are in the process of doing the design work on the Spectrum Field site. So that's your very quick, just quarterly update in terms of, in terms of where we're at. There's a lot of plates spinning, a lot of pieces in motion, but we think we've got the right framework in place. Big thing right now is getting things, you know, kind of getting to a point where we have things from the county. I would tell you, I think the county's perspective is they want to analyze all the deliverables that we've provided them. They want to then come back and say what they think the value of that is, and they want to be able to quantify that. And then they're hopeful that that's something that would be a unanimous recommendation to go to the TDC and the BCC. So we, I mean, we'll get to that point when we get to that point when we know what those dollars are, so. Other than that, you know, we meet bi-monthly with the Friends of the Phillies, and they've been kept fully vet, you know, fully vetted and fully informed of everything, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I have Mike Lavery with me, who's working side by side with me in the Parks and Recreation Office. And obviously, the city manager's fully briefed on all this also.
Counsel, just for clarification, none of this has come to the TDC yet. And so we're waiting, you know, for the county to finish its, and the staff to finish its work. Is that, and it's going to come to us to make a recommendation then to the board of county commissioners, which actually has the final say, the TDC just makes a recommendation?
Yeah, and they anticipate, the county staff anticipated by the end of last week or the beginning of this week that they would be reaching out to us to start those conversations for the deliverables. Matter of fact, that's what I'm going to do when I go back, is Mr. Berger from the county is my point of contact. We'll be getting an update from him on where we're at, because we're looking to keep it moving forward. He's been very good whenever I've given him deadlines of things that we have not been able, you know, we have not met those to just get updated, and so I'll be doing the same thing for him now.
But one of those deadlines that we had talked about, Mr. Dunbar, was, you know, what does this do to the overall schedule? So help us understand, because we're not going to get approval running time soon.
Yeah, right. Where the schedules, the schedules, for lack of a better word, are no different than they were before, other than the years. So work at the Carpenter complex, which would be the first work, cannot begin until April of any year. We have to get minor league spring training out of the way first. And then that would be a two-year process. So, yeah, we're quickly coming upon the time when April of two thousand and twenty won't function, and then we'll be looking at April of two thousand and twenty-one. At Spectrum, we are looking at the work really to not begin until September and be done by the end of January on any given year in terms of phasing in. The potential may exist in the future to look to maybe move some Thresher games towards the end over to Jack Russell if that's something that needs to happen. But as you saw just on July third, the Threshers had over ten thousand five hundred people at a game. So, you know, it's a very popular brand and one that, you know, we've been very successful with the Dunedin Blue Jays and being able to handle getting their games in. The Threshers are a different animal in terms of the fan base that they have now and the amount of people they draw.
Any other questions, counsel? Mr. Albritton?
You know, the economic impact study that came back was disappointing because I think it just showed during spring break time, and the economic impact of the Phillies is year-round. I mean, not just spring break. So I hope that people that are looking at that understand that, and it goes beyond Clearwater. I mean, it's the whole county.
Yeah, the numbers that we had previously provided counsel were based upon the methodology that was used with the state of Florida. So when we said a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty million, that's where it came from. The information that was provided to the county was specific data that they requested, and you hit on all the points of the information that was important to them from where they're having the funding. So two different methodologies to generate that. But they were specifically worried about spring training and room nights. That was, that's the information that's important for them to make their decision. But that's kind of a different set of information than the one that we've historically talked about.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Albritton, because too often, you know, they focus just on spring training and don't realize what the Phillies and the Threshers do for Clearwater and the county on a year-round basis. In fact, you know, Mr. Montgomery, their past chairman, had bought a condo here, and his family still has a condo here. Mr. Middleton, the current chairman, you know, has bought a condo here. Now, he wouldn't have been doing that, you know, if the Phillies weren't here, and his commitment, you know, to the area, so.
And I think on that point, Mayor, one of the things that people don't realize also is right now, as I stand here, there's a hundred and thirty minor league players at the Carpenter camp. You know, most people don't realize that, but they've just, you know, had the draft, they've just signed it. They're all staying someplace. They're all spending money someplace. They're all doing those things. So, you know, and that's what we, you know, we talked about before, just the year-round nature of what this is. This franchise is, you know, you mentioned Mr. Montgomery, you know, their first name's Philadelphia, and their middle name is Clearwater.
But the reason I brought that up, though, Mr. Dunbar, is that, you know, frequently here that baseball owners don't live in the towns that their franchise is in. And, you know, here's an example of not only have the principals bought property here because of spring training, a lot of the employees who come down here have bought property or, and have even retired here after the fact. And we lose, we lose track of that. And it's a message that we need to get out to the community. You know, they may be here for spring, this may be their spring training home, but it's truly their second home. And we need to remind our TDC and our county commission.
And on your point, recently retired, traveling secretary and team manager Frank Copelandberger, not just bought in Pinellas County, but he bought in Clearwater, and he's closing in another week.
Oh, he bought another, because he, he used to be in...
In Marv, yeah. Yeah, yeah, he's buying a house in Clearwater.
I didn't know that.
Yes.
Okay. Well, there goes my argument that he lives more than just in Clearwater. All right, any other questions in council? Mr. Horn, I'm sorry.
I don't have any question. It's just, you know, it's going to be a process, obviously, but, you know, even, you know, the county, all they look at, right now, all the county is looking at is forty million dollars is a big number. I look at it as, you know, if this is going to be a twenty-year agreement, hell, I'd like to see it be a thirty-year agreement. I express this to Mr. Horn. I'd love to see if we get the Phillies to a thirty-year agreement, because that not only makes the, makes the money term out longer, but it also gets us past them being here for a hundred years, which I think is a huge milestone to reach for and aim for. But even at the twenty-year, forty million dollar investment is a two million dollar a year investment from the county for, even at their smaller number, a sixty million dollar a year return into our economy. I think that's pretty cheap. I think that's very cheap. And when you look at, and I hate to be parochial, but in this case I will be, when Clearwater itself is generating a lion's share of where the funding source is coming from, I have no problem asking for it, absolutely not.
Thanks, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Dunbar, while you're here, why don't you bring up the other item that's not on the agenda just real quick so that you can go on to the council? It's not on the agenda, but we had received a phone call regarding the heritage, the Hispanic Heritage Concert in October. And that item is coming to us in August, but they had a problem. They wanted to start marketing the event this week, if that all possible. And so we were going to have, I was going to ask at the end of our meeting if we could just have a real quick discussion. One minute, Mr. Dunbar.
And I have Chris Cook here with me if there's any questions. Historically, Hispanic Heritage Festival's been a two-day festival. It's been a city event with just marketing support from Beasley Radio, who actually talks to the community that we're looking to try to go out and attract. Last year's event, we went two days, and we were not successful. So we're looking to get back to a one-day event, but we're also looking at the city not sharing all the costs and all the burden for that. And that's been a lot of the, a lot of the conversation. When we brought this forward to council before, it was in the events development item, and it was thirteen thousand dollars was going to be the city's in-kind support. Our new agreement will require that to be about twenty-two point seven thousand dollars, you know, give or take. And that's because the public safety element would be factored in. How we're doing this and what the proposal is to divide things into three buckets. The city would maintain all of its operating revenues from all concession operations. All ticket sales would go in a bucket to pay for the entertainment and all those kind of costs associated with that. And then the radio station would be able to keep any sponsorships, dollars that they would, that they would sell. So this really limits our exposure. What the radio station is asking for is to, is to have some certainty that this is going to get approved, because they need to enter into, because we've always done it in the past, but they need to enter into contracts with the entertainment, they need to get tickets on sale, because this is coming up in October, so that's, I think I did it a minute.
Did you say that it would be okay to add this to the agenda for Thursday night?
We don't have an agreement at this point. And we did respond to, we have sent them a last draft, and we have not gotten a response back.
And we will have that response today.
This is not on the agenda or in the agenda cycle, so we are way...
So it would be for August?
It's for August.
Okay, so it would be on our August first meeting, but do y'all have any questions of Mr. Dunbar so that at least they can get some certainty that we're agreeable to the event? Is that what they want us to try to do today, Mr. Dunbar?
I think the way they envision this is to find out whether or not council in concept is supportive of wanting to do the event under that framework. And at that level, I think they feel comfortable enough to go forward, because they'll be entering into the contracts and they'll be entering into the risk.
Staff's recommendation to us is?
Well, you know, we've always been about diverse offerings. We think that it's very, you know, this event historically has been highly successful in terms of reaching a segment of the population that we don't necessarily have done a great job of doing with this, with this one-day event. But we've really pushed them to be able to support the risk with us so that the city, you know, is not on the hook for the whole thing. And so with that, we would, we would, the item we plan on bringing forward August first would be with staff's recommendation.
I'm in support, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, counsel, Mr. Horn, for letting us take care of that one.
Okay, next item is Magic Clearwater, Mr. Delp.
All right, Michael Delp, interim Assistant City Manager. Want to give you a brief update today, talk about a few things. The STANTEC, HRNA, Wanamaker-Jensen work, the library, and a brief overview of the funding outline. Oops.
From beginning.
You're looking for that letter. You can hit any key.
Oh, there we go. So just to update you on where we are with STANTEC. Obviously, today was a big day for us with the work order for the lion's share of the detailed design work for the park. So that is all great and allows us to move forward with that. We have met within the last month with the architect, lead architect on the project and the landscape architect. So what we've talked to them about was the ability to focus, as we have discussed individually with you, on the architecture of the main structures in the park, even as we give the green light for the engineering side of the, of the house, if you will, to go design the permit and construction drawings for the park. So on that area, engineering is moving forward to make the selection for a construction manager. So between the work order for the design construction drawings and a construction manager who we hope to bring onboard soon, we will really start to nail down the structure and the facilities and the costs associated with the final, construction of the final product. But what that does is affords us an opportunity this summer to have a much more detailed set of discussions with the architect and the landscape architects over the final architectural design of all the main structures in the park. What we want to do is to make sure that as we complete, for example, the staging and the facility there that is the centerpiece of the replacement facilities for the existing Coachman Park ban shell, that this stage and structure represents a kind of an iconic facility that we would expect for the dollars that we will be expending over time to, and the city of Clearwater deserves. So we're going to work on that in a much greater detail. That'll include finals, some final designs and consideration of the canopy structure as well as the other structures in the park. The work order includes the design of all structures, as you have approved them to date, including facilities for backup house and the covered seating. But as we've talked in the past, we are approaching this and asking them to generate a phased opportunity for us. And we can kind of talk a little bit more about why that continues to make some sense as we position you to have options or choices in the timing of your, your construction. We have been able to get the contract signed for HRNA, the folks who are going to update the economic analysis for us and draft the RFP for the Harborview site. And that Harborview RFP will be a template that we can use subsequently for the other bluff sites that we have. Wanamaker-Jensen, the agreement with them has been completed, and they will be partnering with the folks at HRNA in New York to do, really establish on paper the kind of vision of things that we're looking at in the Harborview site, as well as the possibilities in terms of City Hall. Hall and the CMA site. And those are documents that we can use to market our bluff opportunities. This I added here after our discussions last week. Our recommendation, of course, to you initially is that we not revisit the library, that we proceed with the project as you, we believe that you had originally approved it. But I will be happy to talk about the library, and I'm assuming that you want to go into that today to discuss further. Is that correct? Or shall we move on to the balance of the project?
If I may, Mayor.
Mr. Pogly.
I just have a discussion on this a little bit later in the agenda. I was just looking for a little more clarification of the funding source, that strategy for this project, for the library, and what are the impacts down the road. So just a more clear discussion that we can either do now or later at the pleasure of the council.
I'll say, I did not, we had two board meetings last week. I went back and watched the development board meeting in its entirety. This is not the first time this quote has been read to you today, but I'll, this goes back to the original ULI Advisory Services Plan Report from June of 2014, that our success will not be limited based on any specific tourism designation, although that clearly that's front and center for us as a community. And that nothing is going to serve as a single silver bullet for downtown. Rather, as the panel advised us, we must continue and improve downtown in itself and its own terms for our own citizens and community. The city should identify uses that can easily co-locate with the library to boost its use and help activate the area around it. So this goes back to, and the reason I bring this up is that at the development board meeting last week, someone said that we should not focus on the library, we should focus on Imagine Clearwater. What my point to you is that they are one in the same. These are not separate projects. In the Imagine Clearwater Plan that we presented to you, which you accepted on February 21st of 2017, once again, the consultants, different set of consultant team here actually, said there's no silver bullet to achieving successful revitalization of Clearwater waterfront, but it must be coordinated and strategic, target Coachman Park, the bluff, and the broader downtown district. With regard to the main library, what the report contained in there was that activation of the main library with an expanded series of community uses will strengthen the space's role as a center for the community and enhance the relationship between it and its surroundings, namely the park and Osceola Our library enhancement project is a key component of Imagine Clearwater. I think maybe, you know, I've talked to you about wanting to have a much larger, we've even talked about with this specified a work session to do this, a much larger conversation, because I think it would be beneficial to us to have to avoid going back and reconsidering decisions that we've made like this. I think it's not a good marketing position for us to be in as we try to approach the marketplace for the redevelopment of our rather extensive bluff properties. I think, you know, getting, when we finally get the train to leave the station, calling the train back in to the station so that we can revisit these important decisions, I think is not beneficial for us. I realize that you're getting a lot of very well-intentioned advice, but frankly, I think it's far too narrowly focused and undermines what we're doing. And I'm happy to go meet with all of our groups downtown and try to go over what our objectives are. But the library is one of our key assets for our community, our citizens, the 115,000 people that call Clearwater home. And so having a great place for them integrated with the park is not an afterthought. This is not a burden to be discarded or shunned, but rather an opportunity to be taken advantage of. And so what we talked to you about the funding of this is that both phases of construction, the first phase as well as the rooftop, which is admittedly the more notable component of that construction, although not necessarily the most important in terms of park activation, I would add, to disrupt the library for two separate projects is of this comparatively small size, and $6 million is a lot of money, clearly. But, you know, it's not a really good two-phase project. Connecting the library to the park, a relocated entrance, one that accesses our bluff walk, the ability to open up the building to Osceola Avenue and reorient spaces inside for the 21st century kind of library uses that we need in the public spaces is a significant and important project. If you think about great public water fronts, even in our own region, in Tampa and St. Petersburg, these water fronts are characterized by having very strong and notable civic institutions in them. And our city has two opportunities for that. One is the library and the other is the City Hall site. And with regard to City Hall, which also came up last week in the board meeting, folks who want us to tear that City Hall down are not recognizing the civic opportunity, again, going back to the Imagine Clearwater. City Hall located in one of the most valuable development sites in downtown, Clearwater residents noted that they would like to see a combination of private and semi-public activating uses on the site, including residential development and a potential cultural use. So once again, I think the collective wisdom of our community sometimes is better than the, some of the direction that we get day to day, and that the library and the City Hall site represent two very key components for us from a civic standpoint. And they will be integrated with our park. They will not be, it will be Coachman Park and these public facilities potentially. If somebody walked in the door today wanting to build on City Hall, and I'll conclude my remarks with this, they'd probably be at least a year with a significant development on that site. So we're not keeping anyone from doing anything by fully vetting what assets we may have in the existing structures that are there. The easiest thing for us to do is to tear down the City Hall. Would not take very long, but there is no inherent benefit to having an empty buildable lot there versus us establishing a good vision for what it is that we would like to see. Good visions will help us attract the kinds of development that we want to have downtown. So I would strongly encourage you to stay the course. Let us move the project forward as quickly as we can, and that this is a vital component.
Let's go back to the library second, Mr. Pogly. I wasn't exactly sure what you were wanting to discuss. Coincidentally, Friday, I was at a Suncoast League of Cities meeting at the Largo Library. And as you all know, it is adjacent to Largo Central Park. That library was active. They had people there eating donuts. They had people, and they weren't homeless people, no offense, but they weren't homeless, they were citizens. They had kids coming in to use the facilities. They had adults in there for one meeting or another. It wasn't there to check out a book or do research on a computer. It was to enhance exactly what Michael or whoever wrote that, you know, is saying. It activated the entire area around it. And I think that we sometimes should not lose sight of, that's what this whole plan of Imagine Clearwater is. And again, as we had said earlier, if we're going to stop and change again, you know, we will never get this started and we will never get it finished.
Mayor, if I may, mine was just a revenue.
Okay.
The question was just where's the money coming from and what are the impacts down the road?
I mean, you know, I didn't know what we were doing, but the quote there just resonated with me after having been at the League of Cities meeting at Largo Central Park. And I think it's important for us to keep that in mind and to remind our residents who question us as to why are you spending money on this? Well, you know, we're spending it to benefit the entire community and make this Imagine Clearwater Plan something that will succeed.
So Mayor, can we address that funding strategy question?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Jay Ravens, Finance Director. Not sure. You want to go ahead? I don't know what you have prepared.
Are we skipping to?
No, let Mr. Pogly say what he needs to say to introduce this item.
Well, that was it because we initially talked about the price, but with a, and I am happy to say that we, I know that Finance is working with project manager to come up with an overall revenue strategy because we get asked that continuously. The different phases, what costs cover what? I was just made aware that enterprise funds can actually cover all the underground utilities funds. So that's an important piece. So as we go forward, or at least parts of that. So I would just like to know kind of a brief overall, and I know it's not totally ready because you guys are working on it, but for instance, starting with $6.5 million, we approved $5.000 today. That was budgeted. That was covered.
No, we haven't approved it yet.
Well, yeah, Thursday. But I mean, so that's covered. So this is a pretty big chunk, the library, and I'd like to see where that's coming from and what impacts down the road. What are we taking off the table? Are we taking something off the table by doing this?
Jay Ravens, Finance Director. Staff has gotten together and looked at total estimated costs currently. We've come up with a total right now of approximately $62 million of potential costs. That includes the library. That includes the park. That includes the ban shell at the $16 million that was originally included. In funding that, we identified in today's budget approximately $3.2 million that will be coming from the general fund budget in the current year. We have approximately $3.5 million that's currently in the project that's not spent or encumbered, that's available money. We have $14.5 million of penny-for-moneys that are already budgeted for the project, $4 million for each of the next two years, and we have another $6.5 million that we're projecting in a later year that we could, the city could front the money until that money is available if we need it prior to the penny schedule. We're estimating currently appraised values of $23.5 million for the three parcels that we have that are related to the project. And we're projecting that those proceeds could be used to fund or repay monies that were spent on Imagine Clearwater. That leaves currently approximately $17.4 million of additional monies that would either need to be internally financed from the city or potentially externally financed via third-party borrowing. We did build money into the general fund forecast for that, the one that you saw at the strategic planning session. We had approximately $2 million a year of debt service from the general fund in that projection, and that would be more than enough to cover the $17.4 million that we're currently projecting. You also still have the ability to review the penny-for schedule to see if there's any other projects there that you would want to reprioritize and move money towards Imagine Clearwater. So that may be a discussion we have at a later date.
This $6.5 for the library, is that a product of the millage rate increase? And was that designed for, to boost up the reserves since we had to use the reserves? Or, I mean, I just, so you answered the first part of the question. What are the impacts by using the $6.5 for the library now?
The $6.5 for the library is just Imagine Clearwater costs. I mean, my understanding is that is simply a component of Imagine Clearwater, the full $62 million that we're projecting for Imagine Clearwater, that it always has been projected to be a component. It's just we've arrived at a number now as far as what that is. To me, it's one in the same, whether we're spending it on the library, whether we're spending it on the park, whether we're spending it on the ban shell. It's all money that we're going to have to fund and have a funding source for.
Thank you. But Mr. Pogly's question is a good one, I think, for us to have, or at least the information provided, because I don't know that we have ever had it in writing, what the projections would be, you know, for this spending and to cover those costs. So if you could provide us, you know, a document that would explain that, it would be good for us to just to have.
And the clarification on the enterprise funds, because I've been...
I'll get clarification for you because they are definitely restricted in what they can do per their bond rate covenant. We'll need to make sure.
Underground utilities infrastructure.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at that and make sure there's no issues there. But I'm not aware, I've been provided with this $40 million estimate for the park work. I don't know how that relates to what you've been told about the utilities infrastructure.
That's the phasing that we're talking about, getting the underground template ready for above-ground construction?
Well, phase one includes all of it.
Okay.
The above-ground, below-ground, it's the construction of the park.
Yeah. But I would like to know about the enterprise fund because that's a sizable chunk of money and...
Yeah, I haven't been in those discussions, so we'll get more clarification for you on that. The details of those numbers will come out of the process that you approved or will approve Thursday, along with the, you know, final designs and the construction manager we'll have onboard.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are we, are we?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Okay. Thank you. Okay. We're back on track.
Okay. Does that conclude our library discussion? I...
Yes. The only comment I can make is anybody who would look at Imagine Clearwater and not think that the library isn't part of it is just mistaken. The only difference is the library is the one thing in that footprint that is already built.
It's already built.
It's already built. Now, there are modifications forthcoming, which is what we're talking about. But there's absolutely no reason why this structure, this facility, isn't incorporated and being used as part of the overall final product because, you know, you have the ability to, for this to supply a lot of ancillary needs to the people who visit the park itself. So it's an easy one.
It'll integrate the library with the park, as councilman said. It's a great project. It's a great opportunity. It is not a burden to our objectives.
Okay. You had another slide up there that...
It was kind of the budget summary, unless you want to talk about...
We'll go back because we saw a glimpse of it and we didn't... Yeah. Oh, is that what Mr. Ravens was alluding to?
Yeah, I think it's more or less a summary of that, yes.
Okay.
So...
Mine is the enterprise funds, which we're going to figure out.
Number of these numbers will continue to come into better focus as we work our way through the work order, work that we will approve on Thursday.
Okay.
So that's just, they'll get better defined as time goes on.
Well, good. This was easier than I thought, Mr. Horn. So we're moving on now to 11.3.
Okay. Mayor, council, items three, 11.3 through 11.5 are all kind of parking-related. Mr. Ryder is our new parking manager. He's going to present those items and engage us in conversation. As you know, parking is a partnership between the manager and the council. And what I need most from you is basically kind of a corporate view of some of the issues that we're confronted with. And then I can, I feel confident in moving out and acting on that as well. So, Mr. Ryder, oh, and this is his first time? Be nice to him, okay?
Welcome. Thank you. Again, was asked to discuss a brief overview of some parking issues. One, Bay Park and some overflow parking needs by nearby property owners. A brief overview of the old City Hall parking lot, and then sort of get the discussion going on the future development of the CMA lot. Okay. Bay Park, due to certain complaints and concerns recently, signs were put up saying no commercial vehicle parking. The subsequent enforcement of those signs has led to some issues with nearby residents. They have approached the city asking if they can use areas in Bay Park to supplement their parking needs. A brief history of that is in 2002, the city did have and established a parking permit program with the Altamar. program with the Altamar condo association there. They issued 15 parking permits to the, to the condos. The security personnel there issued those permits as needed. For whatever reason, in 2011, that program was ended, I think, due to complaints by the Sand Key Association. Again, because of those, the recent discussions, we were trying to find a new solution to work with them on how they can, you know, the nearby residents can, can get better parking. So given that, I came up with option one, is to just reinstate the, the permit parking program, to issue a limited number of permits to the area condos. We would allow overnight parking during peak periods, and then we would monitor that lot for damage and misuse. There's about 70, 75 spaces in that area, I think just a small fraction are paved, the rest are sand and grass. So one of the main concerns there was wear and tear on that, that area. The other option, option two, would be to pave the entire lot. It would be an estimated cost around $375,000 to do that. We would then meter and enforce the lot, very similar to, I believe, what you did at Lot 67 near, near the Coast Guard Station. We would allow occasional overnight parking, again, during peak periods, and then we would have to address the, the restrictions that we have for no commercial vehicle parking.
Counsel, let me interject a couple of points here, and Ms. Aiken, you're going to have to counsel me because I live across the street from one of the parking lots, and we were impacted severely by it. When that happened, we didn't come to the city to ask for a permit program, we didn't come to the city to ask for special favors. The city provided a lot, then it paved it and started charging, and when we have a problem with parking, you, you park there and you pay for it, our commercial vendors, and it comes out of our pockets, you know, because we don't have enough space on, on our lot, you know, on, on our property to accommodate everybody. The original intent of all of this was for beach renourishment funds. It wasn't for condo fund, you know, condo parking. And so this is the dilemma that we're in now. Back in 2002, a special exception was made for a short timeframe, and it got to be 15 years, yeah, 15 years later. So whatever we do for this lot, I think we need to be consistent for everybody. And with that, I don't know what else, you know, I, I don't know whether there's a conflict there or not, Ms. Aiken, I, I need some guidance.
No, sir, I do not see any voting conflict for you.
Okay. Mr. Horn.
Part of the issue, Counsel, that came up is that the parking at Bay Park, because of the, the amount of it, you know, obviously exceeds any need for it to be completely dedicated to the recreation activity that occurs there. We have always maintained that, you know, that parking is there for that purpose, and we, we just didn't really highlight the fact that it was primarily there for beach, it met the beach renourishment requirement. So in our conversation with Altamar, because that's the one condo that had, has, has really experienced the major use of that lot through their own permitting program, which we discovered to add over the years, we highlighted the fact that, that yes, there is more parking than one would typically need in order to use the tennis courts there. So what we're talking about now is, if you all, what's your sense of whether we can use some of that parking for handling overflow during the, the peak season, tourist season, that other condos, not just Altamar, you know, experience? It's, it's not just an Altamar issue, but it could conceivably be a need that other condos have. But I have to point out that we really haven't been put upon by the other condos, you know, with regard to this. So now that the veil is off, and we're looking at this, and the options that Mr. Ryder is outlining, kind of what is your thinking on this?
Okay, let me add, Mr. Horn, the lot across, adjacent to the Coast Guard was a, a grass lot.
Yes.
Okay, and what happened is, we had a period of, of heavy rains over a week's timeframe, and the commercial vehicles using that lot caused ruts to form, cars to get stuck, it became not practical. And it became not a pretty sight to look at, and one of my neighbors called the city to complain about, well, you're not up, you're not maintaining this lot, and I think it was probably the same person who wanted us to put the lot there in the first place, but anyway, that goes, you know, that's a different issue. So at that point, the city came in and started, paved the lot, started charging for the lot, and does not allow overnight parking there at the present time. So these are all things that you all need to talk about.
Well, I'm not familiar with the lot, but it's been handy to see like an overall, you know, like an overview of it, so I can see, but you said that some of the lot's paved, some of it's not?
Yeah, a portion of the lot near the tennis court, I believe, is paved, probably, and then there, there is a, a drive lane in a circle that goes around that is paved, but the majority of the parking spaces are just grass and sand with the stop blocks.
So this would be used, I mean, forever as a parking lot, basically?
It, it has to be used for a parking lot for beach renourishment purposes. We, we have to provide a certain number of public parking spaces to qualify for beach renourishment.
Okay, and we've got that amount covered in the paved lot, but not the overflow?
No, no, the whole lot.
The whole, the whole lot?
Yeah. That lot, the, the lot near the Coast Guard Station and the lot at the Sailing Center, all those numbers are combined that the county uses to justify.
So this is not a temporary lot, this is a regular parking lot, and what is the reason why we haven't paved the whole thing?
Well, for, quite frankly, because it's, it's really hasn't been used that much. I mean, the people who use it, use the other, use the paved portion primarily, and we haven't noticed enough deterioration to note that it is something that needs.
Till the rains and the heavy vehicles.
Right.
Okay.
But, but also what's happened is that Altamar has set, and help me out here, they're not allowing commercial vehicles on their property anymore, or just a handful of commercial vehicles, and so they're having to park across the street now. And someone called to complain, saying you've got a commercial vehicle there, and so the city came in and said, okay, you can't have commercial vehicles. So now, the other side is saying, well, no, we don't have any place to put the commercial vehicles, so we're, we're Solomon trying to split the baby.
They, they previously would, would have a condo resident who would let the commercial vehicle use their parking spot, and they might park in the park. The problem is, commercial vehicles, many of them can no longer fit into those, those parking spots because of how the trucks are configured and that sort of thing. So that's what's caused this reshuffle where.
So why were you saying, "commercial vehicles"? I'm trying to understand this. Is that commercial vehicles that are working?
Yes.
Repairing, maintenance, stuff for the building?
Delivering.
That's right.
Delivering, yeah. I'm familiar with that, I used to work out there.
Contractors.
They don't like commercial vehicles.
Yeah.
Anywhere.
Thank you. So what I see, since this is a broad discussion about three different places here, this parking lot is required to be a permanent parking lot for the reasons just outlined. Apparently, as a permanent parking lot, we chose not to pave it, but our current rules for permanent parking lot should be.
Well, part of it's paved.
Part of it.
We didn't pave the whole thing.
Okay, but it's still the whole thing is part of a permanent parking lot, whether it's paved or not. And secondly, I'm just pointing out points of fact here, we're not required to provide commercial parking spots for the vendors that go to the Altamar condo.
Right.
They want a contractor to come in there and do something, they need to figure it out, or pay to use our permanent parking lot on site. Because if it's a permanent parking lot, do we restrict commercial vehicles in any of our other permanent parking lots around town? Like, for instance, Waters, that's not a good example, because those parking lots are... Well, just to consider that, one second. The other thing is, the other two parking lots that we're talking about, and the one and ones that we've had, that I've had conversations with you, the CMA and the CM, the City Hall parking lot, to me, those would, it's a temporary thing, because with Imagine Clearwater, they're going to go away, and we are going to develop the block. So that's, I would like to just differentiate between permanent parking down at the beach, temporary parking on the block.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're keeping these separate.
Okay, okay.
That's what we're just, we're just talking about Bay Park right now.
Okay.
What would you like to see at Bay Park? That's the question.
Paved parking.
It's permanent parking lot, I mean.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think that that's what, if it's going to be used as a parking lot, we ought to, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Well, and it's, I mean, I can see the, I can see, you know, the, the positive in paving it, but again, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but, you know, condo doesn't want commercial, a condo owner doesn't want commercial vehicles in their parking lot until that commercial vehicle is there to fix their condo.
Exactly.
So it's, I just, I just don't know, because, is there, when we say permanent pavement, are we talking about asphalt? Are we talking about putting the permeable concrete type?
Asphalt.
The oyster, or?
Crust shale.
Terracotta at Engineering Department, the estimates for asphalt.
Okay.
And storm retention and, and what would be required.
Totally the code, if you're going to do a.
Permanent asphalt, doesn't work on the.
So your options are, too, we could leave it as is, so you could go back to option one, too, Steve, that he mentioned, keep it as is, keep an eye on it, issue permits for a limited use during peak times only, and that may suffice if we're looking at just the tourist season, you know, they're looking at, what, like January through March type of time period, and not allowing it the other times. So there's like a hybrid approach we could do, or complete paving and using that lot on a routine basis.
And it's, we're not doing this strictly for Altamar, this, or are we? You know, I'm not sure, you know, it should be.
No, we're not, and Altamar understands that this conversation is not just about them.
But, but in fairness, Mr. Horn, Altamar is the only condo that's even close to this parking lot. The other condo on the other side of, of the tennis court has a fence dividing it, and you have to pass the tennis court and some of the parking to get to it, whereas it's directly across the street from Altamar.
So, Cam, is the reason they paved part of it is because of the use of that parking lot? They figured that, I guess they have meters there on part of it? There's no meters.
No meters.
Because I'm just thinking of the return on investment, if we do pave it, there'll be meters, will it pay for itself, or will it not be used so much that it won't pay for itself?
I'm Sue Talia, I'm the parking coordinator. The, it's not half-paved and half-not paved, what's paved is the roundabout part, and then you have grass coming in and the bollards are there. So when you pull off the pavement to park, you're pulling into the wheel.
Wheel stops.
The wheel stops, yes, and they're on each side of the drive lane. So it's a circle of pavement.
I see, okay.
Grass in the middle, grass on the outside, and about 70 to 80 spaces with the wheel stops.
Okay.
On your question about, do we normally enforce for no commercial vehicles? That was asked in this particular location because of the complaints from Sand Key and the divots in the sand. We cannot enforce it unless it says, "no commercial vehicles." Unless it's posted, that's how we enforce. Other than that, it just has to fit legally in the space and, and, and not advertise per se on city property.
Mr. Dunbar wanted to add something.
Yes, I, I think one of these, Counsel, I just remember is that it is Bay Park, it's a city park, and as a city park, grass parking is approved by the code, okay? So that's, that, that's how it was designed, and that's how it is, it is utilized. You, you think throughout the city, a lot of the parks we have, you know, there's very limited asphalt in the parks, and that, that's a product of the, a product of the code. So what, what has happened here is a portion of the park was turned into expanded parking to support the beach renourishment, as the mayor said. But if you're going to, you know, going to change the use and make it just a public parking area, that, that, that starts, that starts to change your dynamic.
But the parking spaces, though, were in support of, of beach renourishment, so I understand what you're saying, but, but, but that number was driven by what?
The volume, yes.
Yeah.
But because it's OSR, that's how, that's how we were able to do, you know, like we did, and if you think about places like Moccasen Lake and all those other ones, you know, it's all, it's all kind of the same way there. So there, there is, there is something different in the code as it relates to that.
And, and going back to what got us into this predicament, is that in 2002, you know, the, the condo association came and asked for special consideration for a short timeframe, and unfortunately, that short timeframe became 17 years.
I would also interject too, just last week, Marina Del Rey condominium association asked if they could, could use that, that park temporarily while they, they repave their drive lanes, so that was also requested.
Marina Del Rey is one of the condos to the south of the park.
On the east side of the way.
On the east side, yeah.
In the past, we have granted them limited use during times when they are repaving, restriping their lanes, and it's temporarily, and usually we call Mr. Dunbar, get his permission and his sign-off to not enforce the, the no overnight parking. The daytime, it's free to anybody, anybody can use it, but technically overnight, the park is closed from dusk till dawn, and we, we removed that so that they could use it during that time. And we would continue to do that when they need that, with Mr. Dunbar's approval and notification, we would let enforcement know, don't enforce them this time, this time, due to this condo doing their work or whoever. And that would not be restrictive to just Altamar, it could be anybody, such as Marina Del Rey, like he just mentioned, just to clarify that.
So, in lieu of the new information I have, I think I would change to option one, keep it monitored, and because it is a park, I thought, I didn't realize that there's a different code for that, in my opinion.
Well, and I'm, I, I'd like to give option one a try before we just make the commitment to spend $400,000 to, to pave it, but I would, I, I put a lot of weight in what the mayor thinks is the right direction for this, because this is, this is his backyard, he knows.
I don't, I don't weigh on this one. Let, let me throw this out. Why do we need a permit program for them to park their, their, their individual vehicles? We don't.
Because they do overnight.
No, no, wait, wait, I'm not there yet.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, we don't need a.
Currently, the park is open to anybody, so as long as it's open in the daytime, they can park there during the.
Right, so, so, so we don't need a permit program for them to park there during the daytime? If we don't have no commercial vehicle parking, they can park there?
Yes.
So they don't need a permit for commercial vehicles, okay?
I believe their special use for peak seasons was for overnight parking.
I'm, I'm, I'm getting to the third point, okay? The third point is whether or not you allow overnight parking in the lot. And here's where I have a problem, because every condo there could have a problem at overnight parking during. Because every condo there could have a problem at overnight parking during peak season. So the question is, this is a free lot. The other two lots are not free and you do not allow parking overnight. So if we go to allowing free overnight vehicle parking January through April at this lot, then are we going to do that for the other lots? And do you say that there will be no commercial parking there after sunset? You know, sunrise, sunset to sunrise? Because another problem that we had, was it Mr. Dunbar or Ms. Teller? When we had the camper that was parking there, you know, he would, because he could not park on his condo property, he would go from parking lot to parking lot depending on when the police sighted him so that he could park his, his, you know, motor home in a parking lot, in one of our parking lots, which is not allowed throughout the city. So that's, that's the question that we have to answer regarding the overnight parking. Will it be free? Will it be for commercial? Will it be just for automobiles or are we going to expand it to vans and motor homes?
So who is overnight parking there in that park? That's what I'd like to know. Is it commercial vehicles? Is it motor homes?
Nobody now. We don't know.
We did a recent just space count and during the evenings, there are two to three vehicles in Bay Park that are parking there. We don't know who they are currently though.
That's during our last, that's during our last round of enforcement. So we close, supposed to be closed from dusk to dark, they don't go there after their shift is technically ends, so.
And Altamar's main request, and of course, it would be the same for all condos, was really vehicles during the day for construction.
Yeah.
That when all residents are there, then there's obviously less space for the daytime contractors to use.
But then, construction vehicles are larger, heavier, parking in the grass will create...
Yes.
A higher degree of damage.
So they range from, you know, a pickup truck to a van. I think ultimately, we would not support oversized vehicles regardless, but...
So as a remodeling contractor, I did a lot of work on the different condos on the island and everybody was real specific. You could start at eight and you have to leave and they had people looking out their windows if you didn't park in the right place. I mean, but they wanted, if you were carrying a dumpster, that had to come in and go out in one day. So, you know, the heavier stuff, that's why I was really confused of exactly who was parking. Or if you opened it up at overnight parking, would it be just the camping people that do that?
No.
There would be no oversized vehicles.
No oversized vehicles.
Okay.
There'd be a metered space, must that legally in the space pay the meters in this play? Do we see?
Right. Option one is really more to address the daytime use of, of the contractors who are there working.
Well, I, I think, you know, for right now, best thing is go with option one and let's monitor it. And if we need to readdress it down the road, at some point, bring it back, address it at that time. But I'm just not ready to, let's spend $400,000 and pave this thing. I just don't.
All right. So if we do note damage and misuse, then you'll get an agenda item requesting that we address it. That's the way, we'll, we'll leave it that way. Is that okay?
Ms. Aiken, I want to get personal now.
Okay.
Okay. In the, in the other two lots, we do not allow overnight parking. So are we saying that at these lots, we still will not allow overnight parking or we will allow them during the January to April timeframe?
We would not allow overnight parking where it's posted as no overnight parking right now, nor would we in here. What is, he's referring to allow overnight parking during periods is with the permit. If you don't have a permit, you cannot park in there overnight on option one.
Well, the question becomes, who, who issues the permit and who's eligible for the permit?
We sell the permits to Altamar homeowners, such as we did in 2002, and they would have to purchase like 10 to 15 per their unit. And there's Altamar one, two, and three. The security guards issue them out to whoever needs the parking for the overnight parking during those peak times, from January to April or...
But if you're not in Altamar one, two, or three, what happens to the other lots that, that you do not allow overnight parking for? That's my question. That's what I want us to decide.
I think you have to allow all the condos out there to purchase a certain number of...
Or, or we could just issue permits for daytime use only.
Overnight.
We wouldn't even need permits. If it's not metered, you wouldn't need daylight.
If I go back at the understanding here of who's parking overnight? Is it people visiting people in the condominiums like family and they don't have room there and they park?
Chances are, in the high season, there's not enough parking spaces.
So, so we can move forward with daytime use only?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay. Sorry for...
Otherwise, you're gonna provide parking for every condo down there for overnight during peak periods?
Yeah. I mean, that's...
All right, let's move forward.
All right. So the next item on discussion is, is the operation of the old City Hall lot. Currently, the City Hall lot has a total of 127 spaces, 51 are metered, 680A. We have 70 reserved spaces or permitted spaces on that lot currently. Fiscal year 1617, it did 6641 in revenue. 1718, it did 5989. It's currently used for event parking and the free jolly trolley program during spring break. Again, the lot is still being used, it's still making money. There's still a lot of available space on that lot, but I, I understand that there are some questions on if they're going to continue to, to keep operating it the same way they have been.
Council, Mayor Council, this came up as a result of your conversation initially about this being a free lot. So that's, that's the focus of this part of the conversation.
I'd like to open, I'd like to open it up as a free lot. What I, the, could you go back to the slide before this, I think? Or was that?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you got 127 spaces altogether, the 70 reserved for Waters Edge or?
It's 70 reserved slash permitted, so I don't believe they're all reserved.
Sue Teller, we have, we have an agreement with Capitol Theater that they use our metered section for valet nights, for valet during weeknights and on weekends when there's no paid parking. Currently, after spring break, free jolly rides, trolley rides, excuse me. We started charging again May the first. So it was free during that time. After that, because we've got no direction how we're going to go with it, we just opened up the operations and kept it going. Since then, we have allowed Capitol Theater to take some spaces in the back where the council spaces were. So in the event during the free rides program, it filled up, they would still have a place for those to valet their cars. We also have Second Century Studios there. We have 10 spaces for Pinellas County that we allow them to use because they extended hours of their parking garage for our usage for the downtown area on, on weeknights and certain weeknights and weekends. So that was exchanged for that. There's also four spaces dedicated to the Ruth Ecker City Hall or Capitol Theater employees who need to get in and out and get close to their vantage point. So the metered section is still metered, we are still enforcing it except for weeknights, weekends, and federal holidays, but there is still the permit section and we are open to selling lot permits there for $25 a month if a business needed employee parking. We are still making money there. It's made more money last June than it did the previous June. So it is still being used. So I would like that to be taken into consideration. And overall, until we know what we're doing with the building and with the lot, shouldn't we just let it go the way it's fine instead of tearing out the meters and spending more money? That's just going to go away when we decide what we're doing.
So if we left the 70 permitted reserved spaces and you deal with that, still give the county and those people the reserved spaces and then open up, you'd have 51 metered spaces and 680A spaces that would open up to, to the public. I mean, it's free after six anyway.
Yes.
But during the day, it would be free parking for people that wanted to...
Not currently free parking, right?
Yes, but that's what we're talking about now. It's opening that up. I would be for that.
Let, let, clear, Ms. Teller, clarify something.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You had said that a business could buy a monthly permit?
For $25 a month, such as we have in our other lots.
So for an employee that needed parking, that's an option that would be available?
Yes.
Okay.
Or even somebody working downtown that wanted a place to park and they think Station Square or Garden of the Groddges is too far. That would definitely be an option until their lot goes away.
And that would come out of the 51?
Yes. It would be in the metered.
But if it's free parking, if it's free parking, then that option would obviously go away because I don't know during the day if that whole parking lot would be filled. But we are getting some new restaurants opening near there and I think it would give them some relief. That's what I'm thinking.
What would give them relief?
Free parking.
But earlier, you said you were comfortable in leaving it the way it was.
Leaving the 70 reserved spaces, but the 51 and the 680A, making those free, that would benefit the...
Well, the ADA spaces are free to start with.
Well, okay. So the, the balance of after reserve would give a little...
Oh, see, I thought you said to keep the 51 meters and then...
No, no, spaces. Uh, free, make them free for downtown parking.
Mr. Kundav.
Can you separate the amount of money that comes in with metered and with reserved permitted?
Currently, we're, we're not selling those over there. That's something that we could open up as a new permit program to support the downtown businesses in that area.
So, so the five or six thousands coming in is just from the metered?
That's from the metered spaces that are currently being used. And we're up like 38% this time June than we were last June. So people are still using the meters. And by providing free parking in one end of town and not the other, you're kind of supporting one end of the businesses and not the other.
So, so the permits, the 70 spaces don't require a permit?
They, we permit them and they are restricted, so if the meters...
But, but do you get the $25 a month from them?
No.
No.
That, that's, that's what I was saying.
Pinellas County, we did the exchange because of their extended hours to help our downtown.
Their agreements associated with all those.
Yeah.
Yes, their agreements.
This might be a, this, are all the spaces right outside of the library here, are those all metered spaces?
No.
So that's all free parking?
For the library.
For the library. But it's, but there's not a meter anywhere out here right now, correct?
In the street only.
On the street.
On the street.
On the ciola, not on the Drew Street extension until you get to Cleveland Street.
But, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking, I mean, if this is free, free parking, you know, employees of businesses up and down Cleveland Street can park here all day long and there's, we've got no, you know, we're already kind of allowing it. I don't want to necessarily say I'm promoting it, but we are allowing it. That, that's why, I, I just wonder if in the big picture, just, you know, how much, I understand the, you know, the revenue out on the beach is a totally different animal. We're trying to really encourage downtown growth and, and energy, you know, Dunedin didn't charge for their downtown, then they started charging, then they decided, you know what, it's, the charge in the park come down, down to downtown Dunedin, we're going to pull it out, pull, pull back from it again. I, I just, I just wonder if we need to, you know, we charge for parking in downtown in these lots when it becomes an issue that parking's hard to find. But when City Hall lot and the, you know, the CMA lot, which is the next thing, next one to talk about, there's a lot of available space for people to come down and enjoy downtown. I'm just trying to make it that, I think the overall numbers of, you know, I mean, $6,000 a year out of the City Hall lot is a very small number in the overall picture of what we're trying to accomplish in the city.
You're coming to work that too.
And I just, you know, I, I'm much more focused on what can we do to get people in downtown and, and businesses open and, and activity going down here than putting $6,000 in the parking lot. I mean, it's just...
Mr. Poglyz.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, wait. So I talked to the city manager about this and my take is a little bit different, just for point of history. The only reason we're considering making free parking downtown is because we are getting ready to lose all those spots down for Imagine Clearwater Construction. It's 170-some spots. So the conversation, well, how can we help DCMA, the downtown merchants? Because there's four online getting ready to open their doors. So I'm against a precedent-setting kind of thing. We talked about permanent parking lots, we talked about temporary parking lots. The mayor didn't want to talk to these together, but I think if we're going to try to come up with some kind of assistance for these businesses that are open and during construction, you have to talk about both of those. We own them both, they're both available. The City Hall parking lot, it's already paved, it's a permanent parking lot, it's set up, it's generating revenue. It's closer. I don't think paid parking is a barrier for a customer or an employee that wants to come downtown. The CMA lot, now this would require code change, the CMA lot, already it has the bollards, it's already set up for temporary parking, we don't enforce, there's a fence there. Leave that one free, we don't have to improve it. We would have to come up with a new ordinance code for temporary parking lots. That's further away. Okay? So employees, you want free parking? There's where you go, but it's free, you'll have to walk farther. So I think you've addressed it for, from both sides of you. You don't use the revenue, convenient paved parking, you don't have to interrupt the 70 permitted spots for Ruth Ecker Hall, Capitol Theater, anything like that. You just, and I think we're answering the need for the downtown merchants, for both customers and employees. Just open up the gates, leave it grass lot. I know it's currently, that's why I was talking about earlier, temporary versus permanent. We've set a precedent with temporary because we did it for CMA Construction. That's when the bollards went in. So to me, you're paying, if you want free, okay, you're going to lose convenience. But that way, we don't have to do underground stormwater improvements, we don't put meters in there, that's the overflow lot. Leave the city fully paid.
Okay, so, so I'm having, I'm hearing two for a free lot?
Well, I'm reconsidering. I listen and I reconsider.
Wait, okay. But basically, I'm hearing two, I'm, I'm trying to summarize what I'm hearing so far.
Yeah, okay.
Two for a free lot, one for a paved lot, but, but open up a CMA lot.
Open up CMA for free.
And, Mr. Kundav?
I haven't weighed in yet, but I would go along with that. I do think...
Along with which?
Well, with, with CMA being free and keeping the paid parking at the old City Hall.
Okay. And then, all right, then to muddy the waters, I was going to go with free parking at the City Hall site, but rope off the CMA site so that there's no parking on it except for special events and during peak season so that you don't have to worry about upgrading it.
All your employees are going to take the City Hall lot and then they won't be available for customers.
But they're not, but they're not doing it now.
Well, those four restaurants aren't open now.
But, but you're going to have, you've got 50, 50 parking spots?
I'm just saying, think more into the future as opposed to short, we have both lots available.
But I'm looking at...
But, but the one lot isn't up to code yet.
But we've allowed it as a temporary use because we put...
Because it's temporary. Once you're saying...
Well, that's why I said it would take an ordinance to code change.
But again, I'm looking at it, we're looking at three parking lots. One here at the library, one at City Hall, one at CMA. No parking meters here at the library, no parking meters at CMA. What's the passion for parking meters in the old City Hall lot? To keep 51 meters? Is that... To keep 51 meters. Is that revenue that important? Is that, you know, $6,000 that important?
I would interject, as, as a parking professional for 20 years, the, the meters create turnover. So, turnover. So, you know, as you open up your new businesses, you're gonna want to create that turnover, you know, so that there's available parking spaces down there. As you create the free parking, again, they may fill up, fill up. So that, that's the advantage. Again, it's, it's not a huge financial gain for, for the city, but you do create the turnover.
Well, you can create turnover. It could still be free. You can create turnover just by signage saying, these spaces have a three-hour limit. So employees wouldn't be able to park there, you know, and our parking system would have to go in there and, you know, stripe a tire or whatever to know how long they're there.
We would have...
No, you can't, you can't do that anymore.
The faces of cars.
Oh, clarify, the, the CMA Lot, is part of it shell or part of it paved?
It, one part is, like, grass, some part does have some shell on there. It's all kind of mist and mushed and...
Substrate, okay.
Yeah, there you go.
There's, there's, it's not paved.
It's not paved.
It's not paved. Okay, so even if we were to open up, I mean, thinking from Mr. Poglyse's comments, if you open up the shell portion, which I thought was paved, that's still not up to code?
Well, but planning may consider the fact that we're impacting the Harborview Lot. Once that's impacted during construction of Clearwater, that then we could use that lot in an unimproved state for parking during construction of Imagine Clearwater.
We have to define what temporary means, and that's, you know, if, if, if you all have a desire to use a CMA Lot without the improvements that would normally come with code compliance, then we've got to define what temporary means so that we have credibility in how we deal with other property owners. Part of the conversation is for me to get a sense from where you're at as to what your desire is, and, and then we'll, we'll get together and figure out how do we do that.
Would, would you all be okay with the paved, paved parking at City Hall and a temporary free parking at CMA?
Yes, that's what I support.
No, I, I know you, I know I'm...
Oh, sorry. Okay. Oh, you were asking, so I, okay.
I, I could consider that. I mean...
All of it or part of it, or?
I could, I could consider that. I mean, I'm, I think that makes, that makes sense. I'm definitely against paving CMA.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think I know where you are there. Just one comment about turnover of parking, is when you make parking free, and especially if you're making it free in response to the merchants, doesn't mean that the, the merchant employees won't park there.
Right.
So this, we just have to understand what free truly means, and, and that if, if for some reason we have an issue there, we won't be surprised. It's interesting, this morning, Sarasota just went back to, to paid parking. They've been, they, they fluctuated back and forth, but they took a different path than Dunedin.
Yes. Well, if I may, but the only reason that I suggested the CMA free, because if we are going to charge, it's either going to be a permit situation like down at the beach, or we're gonna have to asphalt put meters in. I mean, you can't put meters in dirt. So I just, that's why to me, and as opposed to spending $400,000 on that CMA to improve it and make it a temporary, permanent, or up to code, that, that is truly a waste of money in my mind.
But I do agree with you. We need to define what temporary means, especially with Imagine Clearwater. I'm sure that's different than just having nothing, you know, no construction by it. So...
I think this whole, this whole discussion is that temporary because almost every one of these lots is going to change with Imagine Clearwater, and I can, eventually, we're gonna be building a parking garage somewhere in downtown Clearwater, and I can promise you those aren't gonna be free spaces, period. So, you know, but this is, I'm just looking at, I'm looking short-term, and that's why I just said, you know, under the short-term, $6,000 worth of parking revenue is, is a total non-issue to me in the short term.
Are you okay, Mr. Horn?
But I'm okay if you want to leave the meters in City Hall and see how it works. If we need to readdress it, we'll readdress it.
You want to go back to the airport in Indianapolis?
No, sir. Have fun. This is what parking's all about.
He doesn't want to go back.
I'll just make that in January.
Just make a comment. Back when the streetscape was being done, you know, we had, we went with free parking because we wanted to keep, we wanted to make it as easy as possible. It was already, the streets being torn up. And to your point, it, the turnover didn't happen because all the employees parked in front of the stores, and so everybody started yelling about that. So we put it back again, and then we created the turnover, which is helpful. But maybe this will help if, you know, with City Hall having enough spaces and here, that we won't really have that. We'll have to wait and see.
11.6.
Thank you, Counsel. Mayor Council, you know, given the hour, can we just defer that till Thursday?
No, let's get it. Y'all okay to getting it over with?
I don't think this will take that long. Let's, let's knock this out.
Yeah. Let's, let's go ahead and finish it.
We're here.
Thank you, guys.
Is there a big, long presentation?
No, no, no. I'm just thanking you all. I mean, I'm paid to be here all day, so...
No, I, I was going until 1:00.
Okay, all right. Well, this one is, as I, I sent you an email outlining one, at least one business owner who believes that he has the Pedal Pub franchise sewed up for the Tampa Bay area. There are a couple of other people who have expressed an interest previously, and I think I told you who they were. And the issue is, and I've talked to you all individually about those things that are attractive to you about Pedal Pub as an activity and those things that are not. So I just kind of want to hear corporately if, if you believe that Pedal Pub is something you want your staff to spend time on in, in, in Clearwater.
So the first question, Counsel, is do you want Pedal Pubs, Pedal Pubs on Mandalay and Gulfview?
My answer would be yes, not in the roundabout. I think it's a compatible use with the tourist district. Their use in Pinellas is pretty widely known. St. Pete has, I mean, they're, they're everywhere, as opposed to scooters, which we have to defer.
Okay.
Well, like, to me, the Pedal Pub issue, it's, it's not soup yet. I'd need to see exactly what the plan is for the, you know, the operator, what his plan is. I don't want to, you know, you're right, I absolutely don't want them in the roundabout on the beach. And I'd have, have the city attorney, you know, we have an open, you know, an open alcohol ordinance. How does that affect the Pedal Pubs?
Does that strike?
No, that's...
Does it strike? Does it strike?
Meaning I would like to speak.
Oh, okay.
And, and I mean, it's, you know, in downtown Clearwater, you know, do we really have the, are we to the point that we have, you know, something up and down Cleveland Street, but you know, I sure as hell don't want them on Fort Harrison. I don't want them on Myrtle. Yes, I, it, I, I don't know geographically we're that conducive for it. I'd have to see the plan before I could either give it a thumbs up or thumbs down. This is, you know, just a very generic overall discussion right now, and I don't think I have enough, enough specifics to really make a determination one way or the other. But now I'd like to hear what the city attorney says.
Currently, your code would not allow Pedal Pubs or alcohol beverages on city streets or rights of white. So you would have to, as a preliminary matter, you would have to change the code. And you can regulate, if you choose to have them, you can regulate where they operate. So you have the authority to control that.
So if I could ask a question, what happens when they get off with the beer in their hand or whatever? I mean, would they have to leave it to be disposed of, or, I mean, I never thought about that part of it.
No open beverages on the rights-of-way of sidewalks. Is that correct, Chief? So if someone has an open container and steps off with it, that is inconsistent with our code.
I tend to agree with Mr. Hamilton. I'd need to know more about the plan and, I mean, I think it's a, other cities have it, and they, it works fine. We'd like to see a little more about the plan and...
Yeah, how they manage their situation.
Mr. Kundav?
I'm afraid a lot of our public have no idea what we're talking about, and it would be nice if a presentation was made about that, or at least a definition.
Well, he's trying to get our opinions right now, and my concern, Counsel, is we've already got the number one beach in the country without Pedal Pubs. We're soon going to be faced with questions about scooters. We hear day in and day out about how bad traffic is on the beach, and that's without Pedal Pubs and without scooters. And I'm sorry, I just, you know, we're a family-oriented beach. That's how we've been marketing ourselves, you know, to try to bring this kind of activity to the beach just doesn't make any sense to me because of the traffic problems that it's going to cause on those days that we already get traffic problems. And I, I, I just hesitate wanting to take that leap right now because we're gonna get stuck with the scooters and, and who knows, you know, what else? So downtown, you know, is a different animal, you know, for the Pedal Pub. I, I wouldn't want them on US-19, you know? But, but, you know, I mean, you know, who knows?
Like I said, the gentleman who thinks he has the franchise or whatever to do this, he needs to make a presentation to us and give us concrete, this is, this is my vision, this is my plan, this is what I want to do. But, you know, I, I'm not, I don't want to shoot holes in it before I see it, but I, I definitely would have questions. And, you know, and then the scooter issue, you know, I know St. Pete says, well, we're gonna not allow them on sidewalks. Well, guess what? We're gonna allow them on the street and interact with cars. If I'm on one of those, I don't want to be interacting with cars. I want to be on a sidewalk. Now you're, now you're interacting with pedestrians, and we're trying to create high pedestrian usage. It, a lot of conflicts, a lot of headaches, and we got a lot of discussion to have.
Plus, our police have enough trouble trying to enforce, you know, our, our no alcohol ordinance now. And to, to do it to the beach, I just think it takes away from the atmosphere there at the beach. So I, I, I would hope that we would reconsider going down that path. But, Mr. Horn, I think you have, you know, speak to, you know, the people and see, you know, what they want to present to you that you would feel comfortable in coming back to us. Okay? Anything else, Counsel? See, we did, we got it done, Mr. Horn. Okay? Thank you all very much for your time, everybody. Appreciate the discussions, and we will meet at 6:00 on the 18th. I just noticed.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
What are you asking?
Get feedback.
Oh, it's over.
Okay.